So the first item on our agenda is public comment. I have not been notified that there's anybody here tonight for a public comment. So I will just look around and see if there's anybody online. I don't think I'm seeing anyone raising their hand there. So if there is no public comment, then the next item on our agenda is the proposed amendment to the town bylaws and charter to appoint certain currently elected town officers. And this is a public hearing and is open to members of the public to come and comment. I do want to start by noting that one of the pieces that I consider a critical backdrop to this decision to bring this proposal forward, and I should start back even farther. In the beginning, the League of Women Voters did a study looking at a variety of positions in the town on various boards and committees, and whether they were elected or appointed, and providing some information to the general public and certainly to the board to consider whether we were best served by an elected or an appointed structure. The board took a look at that and, in our goals this year, brought forward a proposal that we wanted to consider, looking at three particular roles: the constables, the commissioners of trust funds, and the board of assessors for consideration of moving from an elected to an appointed structure. As a backdrop to that, as I said, I do think it's very important to understand that the board also this year has updated our appointment protocol. And I think that that actually is a critical piece to this because it does ensure that that process is done, I think, democratically and with greater clarity than has happened in the past and in consultation with the chairs of these various boards as things are appointed. We also made clear in all these discussions that we were not seeking to change any of the people who were currently on boards and committees. All right, that was not the goal of this, so that those people would continue in their roles while they wanted to serve. I could say that, you know, at some point, I hope this board will consider term limits for a variety of roles in the town. I happen to be a term limit fan and have said that for years. I have had many colleagues in the past, I've had colleagues in the past, some who were for term limits and more who were not in favor of term limits. So that's a discussion that can be had by this board at some time in the future. So let me just, with all that as a backdrop, I think I'll put that forward there. Our comments are our folks who are in the room who I know are seeking to speak. So we will open it up so that the board can hear comments. Carol?
Good evening. I'm Carol Peady, 32 Linden Street, precinct detail meeting member. Thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and comment on this question. As we discussed with you in November of 2021, the Needham League completed a study of Needham's elected boards, town boards and officers. And it was an objective assessment of the elected boards and officers in order to educate ourselves and the public and to consider changes that could be made to improve the work of the boards and offices. We shared several recommendations at that time with you. And just to sort of recap what we did in the study, we compared the composition of Needham's elected boards to those in similar Massachusetts towns. We reviewed statutory governance of the boards and offices. We analyzed the board and office election history for the last 30 years. And we spoke with many of the elected officials who agreed to our request for an interview. And that included one of the three members of the Board of Assessors, the three commissioners of the trust funds, and both constables. From that study, our league reached consensus on several questions and recommendations, including that the Board of Assessors, the Commissioners of Trust Funds, and the Constables should be appointed rather than elected. We believe that the two boards and the constable position require specific skills and in that sense are more technical positions. The Board of Assessors are focused on administering state laws on taxes based on the assessed value of real estate and personal property. They work with the town's director of assessing and her staff in specialized roles. The Commissioners of Trust Funds oversee the investment and dispersment of Needham's trust funds with a goal of increasing those funds and investing them well. Their expertise in investments is important in that role. The constables noted when we spoke to them that helpful experience for them has come from their role as police officer or with a security firm that gives them an understanding of how to serve the warrants and how to do that in a safe way. Yet when it comes to running for the positions, mostly these positions are uncontested, which, when you think about it, largely leaves decisions about who fills the positions out of the voters' hands. The lack of contested races for these positions means there's little incentive for voters to understand the roles and the skills required in them. For example, since 1990, Needham's ballot has had only one contested election for the Board of Assessors in 2019 and had no candidates for open positions three times. Since 1990, Needham's ballot has had only six contested elections for the Commissioner of Trust Funds, with the most recent one 15 years ago. Of the 11 elections since 1990 with constables on the ballot, the two positions were contested only two times, and the last time was in 1996. As a result, voters are less inclined to assess whether candidates are qualified for the positions. That's not to say at all that our present officials are not qualified. Rather, it advocates for that determination to be made more consistently by an appointing authority who looks at the position needs and the qualifications of the applicants. This process is already in place for the many appointed boards that we have in Needham, important boards that have decision-making responsibilities, such as the Conservation Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Open positions are announced, candidates are accepted, and candidates are interviewed to determine the best qualified candidate. It's interesting to note, our study found that some of the other towns similar to us appoint these positions. Three of the 16 towns we reviewed appointed their members of the Boards of Assessors. Three of the seven similar towns that had Commissioners of Trust Funds appointed their Commissioners. And 10 of the 14 similar towns that had constables appointed all their constables. We believe a better way to ensure that the important responsibilities of these two boards and the constables are given to qualified candidates would be to search for and appoint candidates to these roles. Thank you.
Who would like to speak? The Commissioners of Trust Funds. Welcome, gentlemen. Good evening.
My name is Joe Scalia. I'm the chairman of the Commission of Trust Funds. I'm here to speak on behalf of all the commissioners. Dan Burns here, Hayden Stone is the other commissioner. He's on vacation right now. Let me put your mind at ease, I am not going to read the entire manual. This manual, incidentally, was put together by one of the commissioners about 12 years ago. His name was Ford Peckham. He's still a resident of the town. And what he did was, he spent weeks and weeks, over months and months, in the treasurer's office, copying each and every one of the trust funds and all the legal documents pertaining to each one, as well as the correspondence behind each one. Then he made copies of all of them for each of the commissioners and one for the treasurer of the town. These manuals are passed on when people remove, leave the office. Okay? I say to myself, when an appointed official go to that attempt. Okay? Let's come up to today. Right now, all of these documents are in the process of being digitized by my colleague. And once, in the next term, he intends to make them, working with computer tech of the town, okay? He intends to make them searchable, storageable, and develop methods for them to be searchable. Okay? Again, we're going to appoint the, go to this extreme. And finally, for myself, I've been an advocate for the funds for my entire time. I was first elected in 2006. I have written articles in the newspaper on the trust funds of Needham. I've also been asked for and delivered talks about the trust funds of Needham to the Center at the Heights, the Needham Senior Center, as well as to service organizations here in town. So we believe that it is best to continue the process of having commissioners elected and when a vacancy occurs, having them pointed by a combination of the commissioners that are remaining as well as the select board. And now let me turn this over to my colleague, Dan.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Joe. Dan?
May I just say one other thing? One other thing I think is important, and which I haven't mentioned, is the trust funds of Needham, we are very, very fortunate in the following facts that relative to all the neighboring towns, A, we have more assets under management, about 10 million. Two, we have more trust funds than anyone else, about 90. And three, many of them are really complicated and really require some effort to understand them, et cetera. With that, I'll leave it to you.
Thanks, Joe. So Dan Burns from Sixth Luart Drive. You know, in my day job, I work as the CFO and the chief compliance officer of a multi-client family office. We work with very wealthy individuals. We're registered with the Securities and Exchange Commission. So one of the things that I think a lot about are conflicts of interest. And, you know, when I first applied for to be appointed to this position, I remember my wife actually asked me a great question. She said, well, first of all, like most voters, they say, I didn't know this commission existed. And then her question was, is that really necessary? Like, do you really need three people to get together in a room and sign off on these invoices because the library bought some books? Or there are scholarships to be paid? And, you know, can that just be an automated process? And would there ever be an attempt at fraud or an attempt for someone to sort of put their thumb on the scales of this process? And I said, well, no, because there's this history of three volunteers. And admittedly, this is not a heavy lift type of commission. We meet for an hour to an hour and a half once a month, but it serves a very important role. And I've just seen too many times where, when there's money involved and particularly the wishes that someone took the time to spell out in a trust document, a lot of this money has been bequeathed. So these were things that were put together, you know, presumably thoughtfully during someone's life, and then it falls to this commission to execute. I think keeping sort of a maximum distance between the politics of it, meaning, you know, the town politics of this board versus the management, both of the dispersment process and the investment process, because those are two separate pieces of our mandate. I think that's just a really important, it was an insightful question by my wife. Like, just, just our existence as an elected board is important. And, you know, Mary Ann, I'm actually really glad to hear that there was thought put into the appointment process generally for the town. I think that's great. But I still feel that for this type of role, it makes more sense to have it be elected for the reasons that I've spelled out.
Does anyone have any questions?
I actually had one more point to make, which is, it's actually in relation to a point that Carol made about the sort of specialized skill that come with all of the positions under consideration. You know, to the best of my knowledge, and Joe maybe can speak more to this, I don't think that we've had commissioners in this position who were not knowledgeable from sort of how to interpret a trust document. And certainly, this is a Boston suburb. There are many, many people who live in this town who are highly qualified investment professionals. So I don't, I don't worry that there would not be a, you know, a qualified individual willing to run for the role.
So I do think, though, right, two out of the three current commissioners were appointed, right, through, through an appointment process? And once have, did not actually think about running at that point, all right? But following appointment and getting into the work, then agreed to stand for election and go through the work of election after that, right?
Since I was on those committees, that was the first question we asked. If you are elected, if you are appointed, will you run for election?
Right.
Very important that we asked that question, and they all said yes, of course.
Right, good. And I know that the committee feels that the appointers did a good job selecting candidates for those spots, and we're certainly grateful for the service that you do.
And we recognize that it's a majority of the, of the select board members and the remaining trust fund members. And we recognize that that's five of you versus two of us. So we recognize where the appointments come from.
So, okay.
Thank you.
So generally speaking, at public hearings, they're not a back and forth. So, but, but we will certainly have further discussion later. But I thank you for coming in and stating your positions.
Okay, thank you for listening.
I'll go bring this back to the second volume of this.
Don't get it wet, right? Yeah, don't get it wet, exactly. All right, who would like to speak next? Josh?
Thank you. I want to speak against the proposal to change the commissioners, constables, and Board of Assessors from elected to appointed. I, I think, as Peady mentioned, some of the background is that these positions have not been contested as much as we would like. And I think we all want them to be contested, we want people to participate. But I think that that alone is not a good enough reason. I think it reflects a use it or lose it philosophy of democracy. I think people, as much as we want people to be involved, people also have the right not to run, people have the right not to, if they so choose. And that shouldn't result in taking away people's right to elect these positions. I think a better, a better thing to do would be to try to educate the populace more, communicate more with the populace, let them know what these positions do and how they can be involved in affecting change in these positions and affecting meaningful change in the town. The second reason is for independence in general. I want to speak specifically to the Board of Assessors. So in this town, we have a very distributed way of setting taxes. So town meeting, which the select board is members of and can vote on, town meeting sets the amount that has to be raised by passing a budget and by passing appropriations that are to be raised from the tax levy. And so that's the amount of money that has to be raised from properties. Then the Board of Assessors independently sets valuations for each of the properties. And so the taxes are then proportionally allocated to each of those properties. Then the select board can choose to either shift some of those property burdens away from residents to commercial properties or not. They have that choice to do so. So those three different prongs are, in some ways, independent of one another. I think by having the select board appoint the Board of Assessors, then the select board would be either directly or indirectly involved in all three, and there would no longer be that independence. I think that there has to, in order for residents to continue to feel comfortable that their taxes are being appropriately assessed and fairly assessed, I think they want to see that independence of different boards having different functions. And then, lastly, in terms of appointments, and, I mean, I really do like that, that the board has revised its appointing protocol, but it still allows for appointments of close family members, you know, of members of the board, anyone who has very close ties to the board. And I think that speaks to independence as well. I think we want people, if they're going to be appointed, to be independent of the select board in some sense. And so I think elections are the best way to do that. And so I would hope for these reasons that these three positions, the assessors, the commissioners, and the constables be elected and continue to be elected.
Thank you for that input.
Thank you.
Gary?
And Madam Chair, members of the select board, I agree with just about everything I've heard everyone say, except the conclusion that we should switch the elected positions to appointed positions because I agree that we don't have enough contested elections. But it's not just in these three positions, it's across the board. And I'll get to that a little later. But having heard some of the comments, I was not the member of the Board of Assessors who was interviewed by the League of Women Voters. I'm not sure who was, but all of the people I've worked alongside, and there's been three of them so far, have all been completely capable. Unlike many positions, we're actually trained after getting elected. We are trained and we take a test and we get certified. So there's, you know, there has to be enough of a commitment to be willing to do that. I understand. But if we can increase the number of people who are willing to run for every office in this town and to get involved, that's a good thing for democracy. That's a good thing for the town. I'd agree, it's consistent with having term limits is a way that more people can feel like they're, even if they feel outside an inner circle, they can get involved and have places to go. I think two things have been presented. One is from my conversations with you, Madam Chair, and as well, what I've heard tonight is, is that uncontested elections are an issue. I disagree that there was only a contested election in 2019. As I think you know, 340 people wrote in votes while two people ran write-in campaigns by a vote of 233 to 107. I know when I spoke to you, I think you had been under the impression, Madam Chair, that it was 30 people or so who either voted for the prevailing candidate or maybe overall, but 340 people voted, 340 write-in votes. They didn't have to just fill in an oval, they wrote in names, that's democracy. So that was contested. And I can say that I know at least one of those candidates, the one who prevailed, would have been more likely to run for office if I knew then what I know now. And I think that education and discussion can cause people to want to run for office and get more involved than they are. I think encouraging people to be, feel free to disagree is an important part of that. With regard to what the individual members do and collectively as a board, on the Board of Assessors, I agree with Mr. Levy. And so that it's clear, I agree with the League of Women Voters that uncontested elections are a problem. And I'll start with, I'll go to that next, which is that all across the board, I think I've summed it up in a letter to the board that I believe is in the record. But I think in 2022, every office was uncontested except for planning board. And I think there's only been the prior, obviously, there was a big year in 2020 when there were challengers, who, two challengers who won and an incumbent lost on planning board. But almost every other election, including going back to 2013, when a senior member of this board joined, it was in an uncontested election. Some of, some of the best and some of the longest-tended people can end up joining in an uncontested election. We heard that an appointed person then ran for office. So the work, so, I mean, I could list off, there are some eight or 10 offices, almost all of which is, are uncontested, not these three. School committee seems to draw maybe slightly more. I think it's had two contested elections at the time period. And the Board of Health, oddly, had one contested election. We haven't seen much there. Let's get more people involved. And, you know, what, what do you do when you get on the Board of Assessors? One, one thing that Mr. Levy didn't mention, I agree with everything he said about the need to keep it separate from the select board, many of the tasks, including the allocation recommendation. There's an independent body making a recommendation to the select board about the allocation between commercial and residential tax so that the voters know that there's, there are folks who have just that role because that is a very isolated task for the, for the Board of Assessors. We hear abatement applications. And it's terrific that that's not, no, no offense whatsoever to the select board, there are so many things all of you are involved with and so many times that you could have someone, what do they say? You can't do almost anything without someone being unhappy, right? So that you, you're in situations where you're constantly encountering people who may not be on the friendliest terms, yet the Board of Assessors doesn't really have that issue until at least after we hear the abatement application. And, and I'd say at least a couple of us have tried to educate people on how to better make abatement applications because some of them are not done as well as they could be or done in a misguided way. But that is absolutely a task that is, should be kept separate. And what better way than to have the public know that they can vote the people who'll be able to abate applications if needed and will make an independent recommendation as to how things should be allocated. So my proposal, and I can keep this pretty short, I scrunch it onto one page, I don't have to turn it over. I, I think with, we should have an independent committee appointed by the town moderator to investigate a few things in response to the League of Women Voters findings. Because I think their findings are tremendously important, I think it was a great task. But I don't think the solution is the anti-democratic way of moving election to appointment. I think it's the opposite. I think it's a study that should be done by an independent committee of, one, what we can do collaboratively as a town to decrease barriers or perceived barriers, because I think it's more perceived barriers than actual barriers to entry for would-be candidates, including a look at term limits. Two, what we can do generally to increase town participation and town government. Three, what can we do to encourage criticism of or challenges to actions by local officials so that people have a voice, so they have time to be heard? And they can get more interested because one of the things you get to say to people when they have a different view than you is, well, why don't you volunteer? And why don't you get involved? And there should be encouragement of that, and we should study that. And finally, what we can do better to educate all residents on the function of town government, including the importance of groups like the Finance Committee and the Personnel Board that are essential to an educated town meeting, a necessary check on select board power, and their resources to encourage greater civic participation in those avenues, as well as the Board of Assessors, trustee positions, even constable are ways people can start to get involved, get more involved, and ultimately maybe work their way up to your seats. Thank you very much. Unless there are any questions.
Okay, Miles, if you would like to bring them over, I can't see from here who it is. Oh, Henry? Is it Henry? Is that what I, okay? Hello, Henry?
Oh, good evening, I'm sorry. Yes, good evening, thank you, Madam Chair. I, much of what I was going to say has already been said, so I won't be too repetitive, I hope. Couple of points I did want to make. First is, the report from the League of Women Voters, I found to be very interesting. I did find, though, the points tonight, if I heard correctly, and forgive me if I didn't, that on two of the boards that we're talking about appointing rather than continuing to elect, like towns or surrounding towns, I'm not, I don't remember what the standard was, were three out of six and three out of seven. So that's not like an overwhelming majority of the world has made a decision and we're not keeping up with them. Secondly, the, the issue, and I am going to be a little repetitive because the prior speakers talked about uncontested elections, and that really is the standard. And that goes to, you know, eight out of the last 12 select board elections were uncontested. The last town meeting election, which was, there was a, a, a major planning board election, I think there were three candidates running for one seat of planning board on the last year, and, and all the town meeting seats were up because of the census. And I ran as a write-in candidate. There were only 20 out of 20 candidates on the ballot out of 24 seats. I was the only writing candidate. I got an overwhelming, I don't know, 41 votes or something like that. But we had people that we had to appoint to the, the town meeting who got two votes. Okay, now that, that's the way the rules are written, and I'm not questioning that. But I'm saying that all, all across the board, we're seeing uncontested. And that really is the issue, is how do we get more civic involvement? Whether, you know, in, in some places, there are feeder roles, whatever. But that really, I, I would urge the select board respectfully to make that the focus, is how do we increase civic engagement? And finally, I do have to say something which I apologize for its snarkiness, but there was a discussion about how the new procedures for appointing people increased, were more democratic. When we're talking about taking the vote away from citizens, nothing is more democratic. There is nothing more democratic by definition than the vote of the people. And I see this clearly as an undemocratic process. And I also am concerned that it is getting a foot in the door, that after these three boards, what about trustee? that it is getting a foot in the door, that after these three boards, what about trustee of Memorial, for example? What about other boards which are largely uncontested that we see? And how far down that road are we going to go before we say, before we have very few boards being elected? So I would strongly, strongly urge the Board not to continue with this procedure, or to vote it down, the point, the idea of appointing these positions. And I thank you for your time and for your attention.
Thank you, Henry. Michael?
All right. I was wondering if you could explain the appointment process. You did send over the policy on Sunday night, and as far as I understand, then the Vice Chair interviews people, makes a recommendation, the Board can object. I don't think anyone's ever objected. So in this case, and one of my issues is, where's the transparency in that? I have no idea how any of these people are being appointed, whether they have the proper credentials. Is there any way you can just explain what the policy is?
So I can certainly explain a couple of things. The, first of all, it is the Select Board's appointment, right? And the Select Board has chosen to delegate that accountability to the Vice Chair in making recommendations to the Select Board for the appointments. Going through this appointment process is a significant amount of time. I don't, Marcus and I haven't compared notes on how much time each of us took over the last couple of years during appointments, but it's a significant responsibility. The appointment process is done in conjunction with the Chair of whatever the particular board or committee is, so there's a discussion with that Chair about how they see their board operating, what they see as any particular needs, what they might hope to find as they're talking to people, or what particular skills they're interested in adding to their board as they're thinking about the work that's coming to that board. So all that happens ahead of time.
But none of that happens in public, right?
Well, that happens between the Vice Chair and the Chair of the Committee, right? There's not an obligation that the appointment process, any interviews are a public.
Other towns do have that policy in place? I couldn't actually find any other towns that delegated to one person, and though I do have the utmost confidence in Marcus, I don't know whether I'll have the utmost confidence in his successors, and it seems to be a very, very undemocratic process. It's really open to corruption, basically. So there's, you, you did mention it was democratic. It's not transparent, and there's really no accountability. As I say, the current appointed board members, I have no idea whether they were qualified. I guess, you know, I'm grateful that Marcus does, but where's the transparency in that? How do we know that these people were qualified?
So, so I think what you're implying is that you're not sure whether Marcus or the Chair of a particular Board of Committee would be honest in making the appointments, I'm concerned.
That's not what I said.
And would not be assessing.
I said that I had the utmost confidence in Marcus.
You know what?
I said that I had the utmost confidence in Marcus, and I'm not questioning anybody's integrity, but I'm saying that the process does open itself up to abuse, pretty clearly. You don't agree with that?
I actually think it's a significant improvement on prior processes.
To have one person?
No, one person making a recommendation. I can tell you.
It's never been challenged, is that correct? I don't think anyone on the Select Board has ever challenged the Vice Chair's recommendation.
So typical, the public hearings, we listen. I'm willing to explain the process of appointments, all right? But, but it's not intended to be a back and forth discussion of the appointment process. We actually discussed the appointment process at two meetings, all right, this year, and we published it in advance of that, looking for feedback. But the fact that everybody is appoint, is interviewed, that we're committed to doing that, and to discussing all candidates who apply, after working to generate candidates, is in fact a significant improvement over the prior process. And I'm pleased to see that.
What was the improvement?
The prior process.
That process must have been awful.
The prior process did not interview everybody. Okay, so it was different.
But so then, there's no, there's no opportunity for somebody from the public to go in and determine who applied, what their qualifications were?
Oh, I'm certain that people can understand who applied, because all that is public information. You could, you could certainly find out.
And the evaluation process and everything's election process, that's public record.
Election process is discussed with the Chair.
Okay. So I guess beyond that, then, this just is a very undemocratic approach. I'm a bit disappointed that the League of Women Voters did very clearly recommend, they made suggestions to increase involvement, increase participation in elections. And as previous speakers have said, I think the real issue is uncontested elections. We do have, have you, you've never faced a challenger, I don't think, in any of your elections?
Actually, every school committee, I was in.
But for Select Board, so 2013, 2014, 2017, 2020, you never actually faced a challenger, right?
Madam Chair, this back and forth is not productive at all.
If I could finish, if I could finish. Michael, we went to school together, Matt, so you know.
For the public record, to be transparent, name and address, sir.
Michael Ruddy, Needham, Massachusetts.
Address?
As Mr. Levy pointed out, it's not necessary to.
That is not correct, that's for a public comment period. It is for a public hearing, sir.
I'm sorry?
It is for a public hearing, it is not for a public comment period.
Okay, 69 Melrose Avenue. Thank you, Matt. So what the League of Women Voters had very clearly said was, there were a number of items that needed to be accomplished in order to increase participation in the election process and to increase involvement. And one of those was to come up with a real-time dashboard of people who'd taken out nomination papers, people who were running for office, what the process was, who was interested. And a lot of people, if they had that information, would probably say, okay, I'll run. The town has not done that. So before you start taking away the democratic rights of the voters, maybe you could start enabling some of those policies.
Thank you, Mr. Ruddy.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Thank you. Yep. Hello, Maggie.
Maggie, 30 Bridle Trail. I appreciate the thoughtful comments that have been made by everyone so far, and I agree with those who are advocating not to change these elected positions to appointed positions. I understand the concern about not having enough people running, and I think many people have addressed that the League of Women Voters did in fact have several recommendations of how to tackle that particular issue, and I think those are definitely worth looking into. As far as the concern that an appointment process would allow the Select Board to find qualified people and interview them, I wonder what prevents the Select Board from finding qualified people to run for office, and even from interviewing them at a Select Board hearing, or Select Board meeting, to have them publicly discuss their qualifications, so that the voters can make educated choices. So it seems to me that having an elected position doesn't preclude seeking qualified candidates.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Artie.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. Artie Crocker, 17th and 11th Street. I'm going to come at this with a slightly different direction for a second. Many years ago, I don't remember exactly when, I was appointed to the Conservation Commission. And, and I do think I did, you know, I, I withheld the mission of the, our mission there itself, for the people itself. And, you know, would I want that changed to an elected board, for example? In all honesty, I don't know. Because, I mean, partially because, you know, I mean, I always wonder, you know, you know, as I step back, as other people step back, I'm always wondering, please let the person who comes in, please let them really be completely on board of the missions, of our mission of the conservation. Please protect our, our wetlands, our lands, our trees, please be there. And I was wondering where it's going to be. Now, the fact is that whether it's been elected or appointed, I'd probably think a similar thing. I mean, as it stands right now, I, I don't know if there's still a vacancy on the Conservation Commission or not. There was at one point, there were two, then, you know, one very capable gentleman, I forget, Flint Ryan of Blackman, now his name was filled in there, and I think at some point there was a vacancy. But I'm always, but I'm always saying to myself, please let the person be on the mission of the Board. And so, and I'm stuck, so I'm stuck on that one. Would I want to be elected? I don't know. Then, then something happened, then I was appointed to the New Year's Needham Committee, because at that point, I don't know how many years ago was that, it was a committee. And, and we were dedicated people. And, you know, would, would anyone ever, you know, want to run for that, if that was an office, that way back then? Probably not. So, you know, but it's hard to find anyone to help out in many different, many different situations. So again, so I said I'm coming in a slightly different position. You know, that being said, I would have a hard time taking away what is currently an elective office without really just cause, I think. Okay, and I don't know, you know, are we at that point, you know, for just cause? And I honestly don't, I don't see it that way right now, I don't think we are. But that's how, that's how it'd happen, that's the threshold I would have to cross, really have just cause to take away the fact that we're now in a democracy and that, for that particular office. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else? No one else in the room? Or anybody else? All right, then we will close the public hearing. The Select Board is not discussing this tonight, because we have a full agenda, but we will come back to it when we discuss taking positions on articles and determine what we're going to do. I want to thank everybody for coming tonight and providing their input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The next item on our agenda this evening is the town alcohol regulations, which is also a public hearing. And I know that we have folks here from the Board of Health. And I'll look at both Steve and Kathleen to come forward.
Good evening.
Last night, so it'll be helpful.
And Kathleen, I know that you're, you're attending all the hearings lately, or I saw you at the Planning Board hearing also, so thank you for making the rounds on behalf of your board.
Sure. That's great. Should I hand these out? How does it usually go? Okay. So we appreciate the revision regulations, looking for some defined, well, we shall get into the details of that. But I just wanted to sort of lay the groundwork through our tobacco work, right? We don't regulate alcohol licenses, but we do tobacco, and we have done, you know, inspections, and we have a history of enforcement that has been quite successful. I think in terms of alcohol, you've seen some of our compliance reports, they seem to be a lot less successful, so some pretty high failure rates over almost 30%, 34% last December. So some, that's a concern of ours. I think other numbers, just for Needham High, you know, half of 12th graders in Needham High, or in Needham have used alcohol in the previous 30 days. And more than 70% of 12th graders have used alcohol in their career. So I think that's an important concern. I think some research coming out of Boston School of Public Health, Boston University School of Public Health is showing reduced hours of service and outlets are important factors in controlling some of the problems or damages associated with alcohol.
Steve, should talk a little?
Sure. Hi, Steve, Steve Epstein, also a member of the Board of Health, 117 Rich Hill Road. Yeah, our apologies, our schedules as boards don't always match. So we met last night, and our staff helped draft a letter based on that discussion, which we are putting in front of you now. So I know you've had plenty of time to review this carefully, so we're, we're going to go through this a little bit with you. But as Kathleen said, you know, we first off welcome the, the opportunity to comment on the regulations. We do have quite a bit of history in tobacco regulation. We have been doing compliance checks in terms of our tobacco regulations for some time now. And that is part of a coordinated effort to reduce the amount of tobacco use in Needham. And it has been quite successful. We are, in some ways, the model community for the nation, if not the world, in Tobacco 21. We've been featured in a number of academic research articles as a result, and the results of the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey demonstrate that we've had a significant decrease in our adolescent use, but we've also had a significant decrease in our adult use as well. And we think that the coordinated approach of limiting the number of retailers, providing education to our retailers, and compliance checks with defined penalties has accomplished that. What we would like to see is a similar approach for alcohol, for a number of the reasons. First off, we have identified that there is a problem in Needham. First off, in Massachusetts, we have more drunk drivers than on average in the country, and we have those stats in the letter for you. We also know that Needham youth binge drink more often than their, than their, than their peers in the surrounding towns, according to the, again, to the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey. So there is an issue here. And what we have seen in the past, at least, is that we have not had defined penalties currently under the regulation, nor are they in the proposed regulation. But we have had a number of failures, which we have not seen on the tobacco side. And we have a graph, I think it's on the second or third page of this for you. You can see that with the compliance checks, and you'll see that we've done six compliance checks over the course of the past four years. And, you know, the rates of failure are pretty high. I mean, we had one time where we had a very low rate of failure with only one sale to a minor, so that's just 3.6%. But on average, we're hitting, you know, seven, eight, nine, 10 sales to minor out of our under 30 different retailers. So about a third of retailers are consistently selling to minors, and we think that this is a problem. So in reviewing the regulations, we had a few suggestions for what the Select Board may wish to do. First, turning to the violation section, sections 10-1 through 10-3, we recognize that there are a number of reasons why the Select Board may wish to impose some sort of penalty, because there are different types of violations. Violations may include over-serving to an adult. It may include some other technical violation of the license. It may not just be underage drinking or serving to a minor. And obviously, when we are testing for compliance, we're just testing for sales for underage drinking. The Board may wish to have separate penalties based on the type of offense that is there. Secondly, we would like to see the agenda set, if you will, in terms of the penalties, to be something defined rather than a range. We have in the appendix to this letter, a list of our surrounding communities, and the types of penalties for various offenses for first through fifth offense. And we are kind of on the most lenient side of any of our surrounding communities. What's more, we offer a range. I think it's within the Select Board's purview to mitigate any type of penalty that is set in the regulation. We do this with some frequency on the Board of Health. When we have a violation of the tobacco regulations, we can impose both a fine as well as a suspension. Depending upon the hearing that we have, we will frequently waive the fine but keep the suspension. That is an option available to us. Similarly, we would suggest that the Select Board choose a defined penalty. For instance, a first violation might result in a three consecutive day suspension of sales through alcohol. It would be up to this Board, depending upon, you know, your interpretation of the hearing, to either uphold that or to change that. But the penalty is set, and it sends a strong message to the retailers that the expectation is that there will be, in fact, be a suspension. That's something that's going to be taken a little bit more seriously, we think, than having a rather vague and large, you know, discriminatory range in the current penalties is set. We would also suggest that in 10.4, under training, that anybody who does serve actually has to complete an in-person training prior to serving again. The current proposal simply says that within 30 days, they need to complete a training. Online trainings are not as effective as in-person trainings, and we have the data to support that. So we think that if there has been a failure, that an in-person training should be required. And we don't see any reason why somebody who has failed and has served minors should be allowed to continue to serve until that training has been completed. We're working on our end to make sure that those trainings can happen at a reasonable frequency, so that people can, you know, will be able to serve once again. But again, that would serve a very strong message to retailers that if you have somebody who is not adequately trained, and they are to serve, they're not going to be able to serve again. and they are to serve, they're not going to be able to serve again, and they're going to have to have other duties in your facility until such time that they can complete that training. Again, it's, you know, it puts a strong emphasis on making sure that the training is proper. And finally, on expanded availability, which is section 3.1, where the select board has suggested that we should expand the hours of operation. We understand that there may be a proposal forthcoming to expand the number of licenses as well, but that's not part of of this regulation. We just can't support that at this time. We feel that based on the current rate of non-compliance with the current regulations that we, to some degree, need to get our house in order with what we have. And that decreasing availability has been shown to decrease use. We think increasing availability, particularly if we don't have a strong compliance section, is really going to be counterproductive to the health of the town and lead to increased, you know, morbidity and mortality from alcohol. I don't know if you have anything else to add to that, Kathleen, but otherwise, we're going to, you know, I'm sure you have some questions. Again, our apologies and to the letter. You don't have to, I mean, take your time, obviously, read this over. You can get back to our board at your at your at your convenience.
So so I think it would be productive to have a different conversation about this. So when we put together these alcohol regulations, I think they were put together really from an administrative perspective was where the work started. The alcohol regulations have been added to sort of an autopsy kind of way over many, many years, which begged to rewrite, and we felt a cleanup of a number of items in there. I would not intend to suggest that they are perfect. They are a significant improvement over what we currently have, however, by making things clearer. I look forward to taking the time to actually read your letter and and absorb what it's telling us. And I know that at various times I have looked at the compliance and penalties from other towns and that, I don't remember, Kate, two years, three years ago, four years, there was a pre pandemic. We actually made a number of changes that brought our, we felt they were too lenient and brought them into compliance, we felt with surrounding towns. So if you have data that suggests otherwise, again, it I think it would be new information to me compared to what I last looked at. So I think that all those may be things that we can certainly take up at some other time. And we appreciate your feedback on some of those items.
I want to say that the research is really pushing in the direction of the harms of alcohol, right? It's and so increasing acts, you know, the pandemic pushed people to overconsume. So I think, you know, limiting, keeping things kind of tight the way they are for now seems like the best approach.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I don't know if we're looking for board comment. I want to thank you for, even though I haven't had a chance to read it, the work that you put in. Just in listening, I know the penalty, as was stated, we did look at that before. I do like the idea of giving this board some discretion on that, because I think there are circumstances sometimes. For example, we had a server that didn't even check an ID versus one that did and was a little confused on what it was stating. So I think one was more blatant than the other, and to give this board a little discretion, I think is helpful. But I do understand being maybe more clear cut as we get into further offenses. Training, I like the point. I do want to look at that section a little more. I like your point about if you do violate, why should you kind of be able to go back out on the floor and kind of until that training, maybe even commit that same penalty again. I do agree in person is much better. I know I've had the discussion with some of the restaurants, and there are reasons maybe that they do like it online for convenience, but I would like to look at that. So those two points and then expanded hours, I'm still of the opinion to kind of let that stay to help the business, but we'll look at your information and and look at that look that over. So, thank you.
Kate, I did want to ask, I do believe we have some penalties related to when somebody is picked up related to an over serving situation that gets reported back to the town. And that is a part of our discussion.
We meet with them.
We bring people in for that.
Yeah, we don't have the ability to.
Not currently constituted, oh, because often you don't actually know where the offense took place. That's my recollection.
Yeah, but we do bring every one of them in.
Yep. Okay. Absolutely. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Any other comment related to the alcohol regulations? Okay. Please come on up. And again, this is not a vote item for the board tonight. We are just taking feedback.
Mike O'Connell, not a resident of Needham, but I grew up in Needham. I own Needham Wine and Spirits. And I actually just came here to observe because I'm not familiar with the existing board. And I wanted to see in action and because I can't put anyone except for you. And fortunately, I haven't been here for a prior meeting. But I'm glad I came after listening to that. You know, I also have licenses in other towns. And I have a lot of employees and I have a lot of family members in the business. And it means a lot to me. It's our fourth generation. So it's interesting to watch and all the different perspectives. You know, having done this for 48 years, I don't get tired of it because now my sons work with me and then my grandsons will, you know, and I want to improve each thing. And each town is so different. And I love Needham and I love what they're doing. And tighter controls are 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 good for us and they're good for the town. And I'm glad of compliance checks because what I worry about is not compliance checks is the one that got away. You know, that has more severe consequences. So it's nice to know what you have ahead of it. And it's easy for me to teach my family what it means to us. But it's hard to teach a 22 year old looking for a job how much it means to me. You know, they'll get fired, but they'll get another job, you know. And so, you know, we we used to bring in our own service to hit all our employees of all four locations and and pay them. Now I appreciate the fact that we could send them to the Board of Health's thing, you know. And, you know, the only thing that I, you know, I've been certified probably 14 times. And the test is kind of, okay, I gotta do it again. But I do it, you know, and we all do it. And so I'm just observationally, you know, I think it's great. As far as the hours, the market dictates the hours. Okay, this is the only store I can't open before noon on Sundays. So be it. So they go to my Newton store or we train them. COVID taught us to close earlier. We were closing at 6:00. Then we extended it to 8:00. Nothing good happens after 8 o'clock, you know. So we stay with 8:00, you know, that's in all the times, you know, there and and it also saves me money because I don't have to throw another shift on. So, you know, as a license holder, I respect what you're doing.
Thank you for that.
It was an interesting report. Because the compliance checks on tobacco, not in this town, in my other towns, they drive me crazy. But we don't have tobacco in our license here, so and we never will.
Thank you so much.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Okay. Hello, Georgina.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Georgina Arietta Rootneck, Precinct J. And I just wanted to say thank you to the board, Select Board, for having this report tonight. And also thank you to the Board of Health folks. It was very educational. And I look forward to reading the letter. I don't know if that's going to be available somewhere. And thank you to the Select Board for actually, you know, really thinking about all of this and trying to keep all of us safe, right, in addition to our youth. And thank you so much for the previous speaker. He was very informative as well. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Georgina, I think we'll end up putting adding it to the files online to the packet. So we'll end up having to update the packet to include the new information from the Board of Health.
That's wonderful. Thank you. Thank you so much. And stay safe and drive carefully, everybody, tonight.
Thanks.
Thanks, Georgina.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else online? I don't see anybody else in the room. Okay. All right, we are.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to separate the consent and the appointments. So I'd like to move the consent agenda, please. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Can I suggest someone else move the appointments?
Yes.
I'll be abstaining.
Madam Chair, I'd like to know the appointments.
And is there a second? Any discussion? All right, and we do note that Allison Barelli is on the appointments list to be appointed to the Single Parcel Historic District Study Committee. All right.
Madam Chair, could I note that as required, we're taking the recommendation of the Boston Realtors?
Local chapter of the Board of Realtors.
Who is recommended this applicant?
Correct. Thank you. And and that is has been true for other positions or is true for other positions that are mandated on this particular committee as well, where where the local professional society is making the recommendation for appointment. Okay, all all in favor? Any opposed and an abstention?
An abstention. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Sustainability Coordinator position. We, if I could invite Mr. Frail to come forward. This was a discussion the board had at our last meeting. And Mr. Barelli asked for some additional information, so I'm thankful that Mr. Frail has joined us tonight to really talk about the discussion that's been had at the Climate Action Planning Committee for this particular role.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephen Fr- Frail, excuse me, 29 Power Streets and Chair of the Climate Action Plan Committee. So, yes, so I was asked to put together a bit of an overview of of what the Climate Action Plan Committee has been working on with respect to a sustainability coordinator position. I just wanted to give a little bit of context for the discussion to start. So just as a reminder, the the Climate Action Plan Committee was charged by the Select Board to address the town's greenhouse gas emissions and specifically in meeting the targets across all sectors mandated by the state. So a 50% reduction by 2030 is 75% reduction by 2040 and then a net zero by 2050. And so the other context is in that is that most of that greenhouse gas emissions actually sits outside of the direct control of the municipal town. So so buildings as well as transportation in residential as well as commercial is where where most of the the greenhouse gas emissions are. So we have been meeting. This past fall, we had several working groups that that met. They were actually organized around topics like decarbonizing buildings, decarbonizing our electricity supply, decarbonizing transportation across all sectors. And we also had a group that was working on governance specifically. And so that that working group came forward with the recommendation, their number one recommendation was a governance structure to support the implementation of a climate action plan. And they had four four components of that, some that involved reviewing policies and operations to update climate action plan goal standards, including climate awareness programs across all sectors. Reporting was another one. And then number three was actually employing a sustainability coordinator to improve the town's organizational capacity to understand and coordinate elements of the climate action plan. Where we are right now is we are now through the working group phase and we have begun to engage with a consultant to write the plan. So we have a consultant who is I believe with contract in hand. Is that correct? Yes. So so we're ready to start working with the consultant. And this actually kicks off a pretty significant phase for us because there's a lot of town engagement we want to do around it. We want a very open process so that everybody's aware of what's happening, what the state is requiring of us, what that's going to entail, all sectors, residential, commercial, but also what the options are. So what are the pathways to lowering our greenhouse gas emissions? What are the grant opportunities, tax incentives, et cetera, that both the town can take take advantage of, but also private residents and businesses and organizations? So we envision this sustainability coordinator really helping to drive that process with the the Climate Action Plan Consultant. So public meetings, outreach within the town, as well as within different sectors across the town. We also see the coordinator involved in assisting residents, organizations and businesses and projects they might be engaging to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. So helping them take advantage of available funding programs, have the knowledge to make informed decisions and not be misled. Because there because there's a lot of money floating around, there's also a lot of opportunists out there. And a sustainability coordinator can be a really great source of truth for our town residents and business businesses. There's a lot of reporting that that is required of of the programs like Green Communities that we're a member of. We also have a greenhouse gas inventory, which will help us measure and hold ourselves accountable. And that's something that needs to be updated with some regularity. And then there are specific actions that came from the other working groups. For example, we had this past fall authorized the town to begin engagement around a community municipal aggregation program. And so that process is just starting to get underway and will require, again, a lot of public engagement, public hearings, helping come up with the actual plan that which will go to the state to be approved. And then once it does get approved, a lot of community education. And I'll just point out, Mr. Barelli, I think we had a conversation about this as well as how do we reach everybody in town to make sure that they're aware of their rights under municipal aggregation, that they're aware of their ability to opt out of the program. And then they're very, you know, they understand what the different levels of the plan mean. And so that's a very big project that we envision the the sustainability coordinator being involved in. And then just from personal experience, I probably on a weekly basis get an email about new funding availability from either the state or the federal government. And I'm not an expert on any of this. And it's a full time job, just keeping abreast of what those funding opportunities are. Not only that, writing the grants, right? And so we envision the the sustainability coordinator being somebody who could write those grants, both again for the town, but also help point other organizations to the to the grants that are available. Certainly around the governance generally assisting town manager as well in in developing a governance pro program around climate and sustainability. And then there's a number of, we had a very nice meeting this week on permitting and building codes and processes and zoning. It was thrilling meeting for anybody who was able to to weigh in on it. But it's a lot of minutia and it requires a lot of thought. And again, somebody who has an ability to to look at what the best practices are certainly could be a good person to to help the planning board, the Select Board, other other parts. Just by way of example, we talked about a priority that the town's interested in, which is to put solar canopies on both municipal lots as well as potentially on private lots. That's actually sounds pretty simple, but there's nothing in our zoning that allows that. And then when you start to like unpack what it means to put it on there, there's groundwater management, there's parking space studies that are involved. You have to make sure that the plows can get through and work, you know, turn around. You have to make sure that the fire department and the other emergency crews can get in. So it's a complicated thing to to think about. And this is what a sustainability coordinator could really help the town work through. So that's generally just an overview of the 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 program. And I guess. And uh, I guess I'll just stop there and see if there's any questions.
Thank you. So eh part of the reason for having this discussion is that our proposed funding mechanism for this role was out of the ordinary and customary. Um, if we had continued on an ordinary and customary path, it would be at least a year before we would be considering uh such a role and um, you know, waiting until after we have a plan. So doing everything sequentially. Um, but I think there is a sense that there is uh both the opportunity now for securing uh grants that are beneficial to the town um that would help move us forward faster. So there was a recommendation that we could fund this and and check that assumption through our use of ARPA funds, and that is the proposal that the board is discussing. So let me turn it over for questions.
Madam Chair, sure. Thank you, Stephen, for this. Um, you know, there were two issues that you probably heard that I had at the last meeting. Um, one was getting a better idea of the position which was provided, and the second was the funding mechanism. Understand completely that the committee wants this position. Um, and I don't want to get you on the budgetary side, but of course, we get a lot of requests and people come in front of us every month. You know, we have DSR forums and say, here's the position we need for the town, and we have to make that decision. So as a board, I'm concerned about voting this out of the budgetary process. So that's separate from your ask, um, which I think if weighed against other asks and going to town meeting, I think people would most likely approve it. Um, and this board may approve it. Um, I do have concerns as we move forward with um a position that the workload, I know it's going to be put on this coordinator, but there's going to be more workload, which is could be more expense for people and build. I see it in my business. What's going on? And and I think as things get moved further along, it's going to be much more costly across the board to implement these things. And just to me, it's another level of kind of adding things and then having kind of justifying the position to add things is my concern. Not saying that's going to happen. I just, overall, we're going very fast from two or three years ago, and at one time this position could wait, and now I understand there's there's an opportunity to get it in. So I really um appreciate all the work you've done and actually putting it out in front of me because I I've heard a lot about it. Now we actually get, you know, I see now we have a, you know, a a template, what the roles would be, and I might not agree with it, as you probably can tell, some of it, some that I do agree with. Um, but it gets a better understanding of what the position is, so people can look at it, and no matter what this board decides to do, understands that it's grounded in a a nice memo and and a jar post. And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Marcus?
Yes. Uh, just want to say thank you, Stephen, for being here, and I think your thorough work along with the uh the committee to kind of come up with this position and this opportunity. So as far as this um coming out of the ARPA funds, that would expire in twenty twenty-four and then Kate, that would then come out of our budget going forward.
So there's no, there's no guarantee. This is an eighteen-month assignment.
Okay.
Um, you know, w- we, it's possible that we'll have demonstrated uh a need that we could put in for the essentially would be the FY twenty-six budget. There would be a gap. Um, we're hoping that uh, you know, with all these grant opportunities, there might be funding that might get us to bridge that gap. But the sense is there's so much work right now. There's no hands to do it, and you know, even eighteen months would be helpful. And then if we start over again, we start over.
Right. So you're saying after the eighteen months, um, then there'd be nobody in that position saying like January twenty-five? And then we would have to go back. We would have to, how long would that?
Well, conceivably, um, we can, you know, there may be funding that could extend through all of these sustainability grants. There may be funding that could extend from January twenty-five to what would be the the next town meeting essentially that we could ask for this to be in the budget. We would have to put it in the budget in this uh the essentially the fall of twenty four.
Okay.
So.
All right. With all that being said, I just want to say for Stephen, I think, you know, with this position and this, you know, generational climate, you know, problem that we have, it makes so much more sense to me, I'm saying this for me specifically, for this um solution and having this position created and seeing where it can go long term because, you know, it costing us more money in the near future is going to help us save more money and hopefully help us in our community um be around for a lot longer. So um saying that being in favor of this position and seeing, you know, hopefully we've come up with the grants and the funds, so we don't have to take a hiatus after this position is if it's approved. But I see that this is such a long-term benefit, and when I think about, you know, children and and people coming after us, you know, there are opportunities to have a sustainable community that they live in with so many positive um outcomes from this. So I appreciate all the work that you and the committee have done, and um I'm looking forward to hopefully seeing where we can go from here.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. I just uh on the, to your point, you know, there there is a lot of urgency there. Um, and I think it's not just because the the, you know, the funding is suddenly here. I mean, I think we kind of ran into a situation where um the state, the federal government came out with some very large programs, um, sort of unexpectedly. A lot of people were not at once seeing those things coming. Um, that combined with our timing on the climate action plan, I think it really is the right time to engage somebody. And uh, you know, even if it is just eighteen months, there's so much between this DEA, the municipal aggregation, the uh the climate action plan, um as well as zoning permitting as well that can be done in those eighteen months, or at least set us up on a pathway to getting it there that uh it's worth going for. Like, if we had no firefighters and we got one for eighteen months, that would be better than none for eighteen months, right? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know if you know the answer, but what's the ballpark figure?
The amount of federal or IRA grants are out there.
Uh, there are billions, billions of dollars in in the IRA right now. So it and and a lot of that is um directed towards things like home decarbonization. So you you have the ability to get some tax credits uh for switching over to heat pumps, taking your gas um or oil burn furnaces out. So there's billions in that. There's billions for things like putting EV charger networks in, and I know the town has taken advantage of some state funding uh for that, and we have some chargers that are are town-owned. Um, there's still plenty more around that. Um, and there's a lot as well for um uh resilience type, you know, so how do we protect our canopies, make sure that we're um, you know, we can re, we can what's the word, recover from the climate disasters we see more often, right? And most people, I don't know if anybody saw the the article about the homes on uh the Outer Banks in North Carolina that are falling into the ocean. I mean, it it's here, it's happening, and it's going to happen along our seaboard and, you know, we're we're in a flood plain too. So I think we have to be aware of that. Yeah.
I won't elaborate because, as you know, I'm familiar with the Chair of the Climate Action Plan Committee, but I would like to say that I think um, one of the reasons that I think this position is really important is because, as you've mentioned, um, most of the decarbonization that needs to happen is actually not town-based. It's it's the residents of this town, and this is a a helping hand that the town can provide, not only to help us meet our clinicals, but to help the residents of Needham take advantage of the money that's available to help them make these these inconvenient and expensive switches that will benefit their health and will benefit the town and the all of the communities in which they live, both in both, you know, their neighborhood, the town itself, the state. These are things, these are changes that have to happen, and we have a responsibility to help residents to make these changes because they're complicated. And whether that's switching to, you know, a municipal aggregation for electric electricity or decarbonizing their home. Um, this is a really fantastic service that the town is providing to residents, and I just want to keep in mind that it's for their benefit, not just that the town can complete our portion, right? Because our buildings are are pretty well underway. Um, so I really appreciate that the the Action Plan Committee has has brought this forward because I think, you know, it's never too soon to start because we have a long way to go, and I I'm pleased and proud that we're able to to hopefully offer this.
So if there's no further questions, then we can say thank you to Steve.
Thank you.
Today, and um we'll bring this back next week for our final discussion and a vote. Um, but yes, I I I do, uh, I talk all the time about being the poster child at the committee who said, okay, we've been told that our air conditioning system is going to fail, and when it fails, it does not have parts that can be replaced. So we will need to be making a decision about whether to replace it with a conventional air conditioning unit or whether we will make a change. And it's at all of those junctures that, um, you know, thousands of houses in town that are going to collectively make the difference in the town of Needham making progress toward this goal. So we need to make that not a mystery to people and not a scary thing for people to do. Thank you. The next item on our agenda tonight is the MSBA Statement of Interest, and I see we have the superintendent and uh our school committee chair and vice chair with us. So we welcome you tonight. I apologize for running behind. Uh, we are doing our best tonight. It's going to be a long one. This is a critically important topic. And if I had my druthers, we would have taken this step two years ago, but I am glad we are finally having this discussion.
We are uh glad to, and I can lean on you. Uh, you tell me, I will. Uh, you can go ahead and drive. Thank you, Miles. Um, well, as you said, Madam Chair, uh, thank you. I I told the school committee that uh Lao Tzu, a Chinese philosopher, had said that a journey of a thousand miles begins with a single step, and that's what this is. This is a long process. This is not the answer. Um, this is, we've already begun uh through, you know, your support and school committee's leadership um and a long way to go. So what we wanted to do this evening is is uh walk you through uh the Statement of Interest. Angolotti and Hank Haff are both online and available for questions and comments, and um.
Are we able to just bring them into the meeting? Uh, Miles, have we been able to bring them in? Okay, if we can do, if we can do that, that would be uh nice to have them here in case there's some question that comes up. Coming over, right?
Now I'll have you go to the next slide, Miles, when you're ready. So I think maybe it's a good idea to remind the community, you know, how we got here and why we're here. Uh, so the goals of the school master planning process uh were were pretty involved, and it's been going on for, uh, well, as you pointed out, Madam Chair, a few years. So first of all, we want to remediate a deteriorating infrastructure, particularly at Mitchell and Pollard Schools. Um, that includes uh modular classrooms at Pollard that are well beyond their useful life. We want to alleviate general overcrowding and and lack of adequate program space. We want to mitigate the impact of construction on one or more generations of students so that a student is not moving from school to school facing a construction project as as she or he grows. Uh, we want to avoid expensive building maintenance uh over time by trying to get these renovations done as soon as possible. Want to avoid expenditures for temporary facilities uh which would be necessary if, for example, we tackle the Mitchell project first, and we can talk about that. And then we want to provide some elementary enrollment uh capacity, perhaps including preparing Needham for universal preschool, uh something that I know there's a greater interest for. Thanks, Miles. Now, the the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or MSBA, has been a longtime partner with with Needham, and its precursor, the School Building Authority, which was under the um Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, helped fund, as you know, uh Needham High School, expansion and renovation, um Elliott, Broadmeadow, uh to different degrees. But more recently, the MSBA has partnered with Needham on at least three projects, Pollard uh roof and and some other aspects of Pollard, uh, the Newman renovation, and of course, the Sunita Williams Elementary School construction. Now, the MSBA, it's a uh, to remind the community, it's a quasi-independent government authority, and they work with communities to provide affordable uh school space. And uh I really think they're they're a pretty amazing partner too. They do amazing work, and uh we've been fortunate to work with them. In order to engage the MSBA, that first step with them is to submit a Statement of Interest or an SOI. Now, the process um which uh is open right now and concludes on April fourteenth requires a district to prepare a Statement of Interest for your project. If you have more than one project, then you submit uh two SOIs. Some communities submit two, three or four, but you are asked to prioritize a project. You can't submit all of them, let them sort through. Uh, you you prioritize a a a project. Now, the SOIs, if you you have a copy of the SOIs, they're not terribly exciting reading. There's a lot of redundancy, repetition, and it's a template um that requires a lot of specific information. It is what it is. So there there's not a lot that you can, you can add to it. Uh, you you don't want to editorialize or solve problems in it, but you have to tell the story in as uh well, really as official and and objective ways you can, and and then working with them, you'll kind of sort out, you know, what's what and what's next. So the MSBA uh requires the school committee um to vote to authorize the SOI, and also the municipal governing body, in this case, the Select Board, also must vote to submit an SOI, and together with lots of certifications, those are forwarded to the MSBA. Um, our intent is is to do that later in April. Um, and I'll talk a little bit about next steps after that, but we will wait uh for a while after we submit it. Now, I mentioned that the MSBA uh requires that the district indicate a a priority project of if you're just submitting one, that's the priority. Submitting two, you have to, you have to choose one. Um, what what the MSBA will then do, if you are invited into the process, is have a conversation with you. Why did you choose this project? Um, what about the other project? Uh, what, let's let's talk through this because they're going to come out to visit. They'll engage in a lengthy conversation over over a period of time. Um, we are proposing, the school committee is proposing that Pollard be our priority project. Um, and uh um, let me just chat a little bit about that. The school committee uh for for a while has been discussing what are the different options as as well as the school master plan, planning group. And they voted uh last year that options C and D were the most educationally sound and overall less expensive path forward for students at Mitchell, High Rock and Pollard because a few things happened. One is that you can reconfigure and expand Pollard by about a hundred thousand square feet as a grade six through eight middle school. That would allow you to convert High Rock to a sixth elementary school and or a center for early childhood preschool, um relieving some space perhaps at Newman, or offloading some students from Newman to High Rock and creating the preschool at Newman. Variety of options that the community can discuss. Would then allow you to reconstruct Mitchell as a three-section, eighty thousand square foot school on the Mitchell site. The range there, this is an expensive proposition for this community. Um, and these dollars are escalated to reflect when this construction would happen, but they range from three hundred and thirty-four million to about three hundred and fifty million dollars. And and that is, I want to add, that is if next May town meeting, May of twenty-four, the community decides to vote money for a feasibility study. If that is delayed, these dollars increase. So every delay after next May of twenty-four increases by a factor uh the construction of of these schools. So um option C and D are preferred. Uh, they they do avoid costly temporary swing space. If we did Mitchell first, and and by the way, Mitchell, according to the MSBA, the last time they came out and rated Mitchell, Mitchell was rated as a school that was in more need than Pollard. Um, it's an older building, for sure. Uh, it has an aging infrastructure. The town uh through Kate's leadership and the the Select Board and this and the school committee's support has been taking care of it. We're redoing bathrooms inside the school. You know, we've added modular classrooms with the support of the Finance Committee and the Select Board. So we are providing space there, and it is a safe and and warm space, and it is old space, and the MSBA will will wonder why that. Um, but some of the thinking behind that is that if you tackle Pollard first and you reconstruct that building, a grade six, eight, you free up High Rock to move Mitchell students into High Rock temporarily. Otherwise, by doing Mitchell first, you have to create a temporary school. Now, Hillside could help for a little bit, but Hillside has limited space, and you'd have to upgrade Hillside even more to meet the code it would need to become a school again. So we've, we have space at Defazio Field. There is space there. Think about where the tot lot generally is in the parking lot. Uh, that could become the site of a temporary school, the cost of forty million dollars or so. So this would avoid that by doing Pollard first. Uh, it's also the fastest resolution to the Mitchell uh school issues. Um, it creates more square footage overall, and it can create uh elementary classroom capacity for growth, as I mentioned. So um, next steps, uh, the school committee has already had a discussion about the SOI. They uh plan to have another discussion and a vote on the twenty-first. Uh, tonight, you have the SOIs in front of you, and we're happy to discuss them, any aspect of them. And then we would respectfully ask for your vote and support of these SOIs. And then we would respectfully ask for your vote in support of these SOIs. The PBBC is reviewing these as well. And then with all of the proper signatures and documentation, we would like to submit it by the 14th of April. And then there's a long wait because the MSBA will take several months, maybe up to 10 months to make a decision. I will caution you that there are many communities that have submitted SOIs in the last couple of years. And many of those committees have not been accepted into the process. And those communities have not been accepted into the process. Many of them have never had a project with the MSBA before. Needham has had three. So this is a robust, thoughtful, and the right thing to do is to ask the MSBA to partner with Needham as they have in the past. At the same time, we have to be prepared that the MSBA will say, this isn't going to happen right now. It will have to be deferred. And again, deferring anything raises the stakes and the costs, and exacerbates all the issues that the school master facilities plan has identified. So with that, Madam Chair, members of the Select Board would be happy to try to answer any questions you have about the SOI or about the school master planning process.
And I would just put these in some terms. So when we began to work with the MSBA, I think we had a reimbursement rate of, I don't know, 45%? Something like that, maybe on the first project or two? Current reimbursement rates are more like 20%.
We probably had, I think Hank can correct me, but it was probably around 27% to 30% for Sunita Williams.
All in. We expect it to be lower, though, again, for this project.
The MSBA is struggling with dollars. Their, in their metrics, their communities, same number of communities asking for projects, but they're also going to be reducing the number of projects they invite into the pipeline just because of their available dollars and the pressures on inflation and labor costs and all of that. So that makes the bar even higher for us in this SOI. And it's the right thing to do because the state has been and should be a good partner in helping Needham. However, if you're not accepted, the community needs to make a decision about how you move forward and what the implications are for that.
So, so I was going to say, but even at 20% on this project, it would be about $70 million, right? It's not insignificant. It could be a significant help to the taxpayer to have that fund. So it absolutely makes sense to ask first and to see if we can be invited into the process. So with that, I'll open it up to the board for questions.
Thank you all for being here and all of the work that has gone on to get us to this point. Just want to understand, I know what you said about if we do Pollard first, what would be able to do for Mitchell? So when we're doing Pollard, what happens to the kids that are in Pollard? I don't know if you said that. I just want to make sure people know that.
I didn't. That's a good question. We'd follow similar models we did when Needham High School was reconstructed, and that is students would be in the, in the building while we're doing renovations. So like Needham High School, students were kind of chased around the building as the construction progressed and they were moved. It, it's, it's not going to be a lot of fun. It'll be a scheduling, you know, challenge, but it is something that we've actually done. And so they would remain on campus. High Rock students would stay at High Rock, and the seventh and eighth grade would stay there and move around the building as it is added on to and as different places are renovated. So one example is the modular classrooms would be targeted to be removed. Construction happened there, and when that construction's done, you move students in, and then you tackle another part of the building.
Got it. All right. Thank you.
Other questions?
Sure, Madam Chair. Thank you. You know, someone who was on those Zooms during COVID for the school master plan and the Chair Vice Chair and all these options, you have come a long way. If we could vote this tonight, I'd vote this tonight, but you know, we're going to vote it next time. To quote the famous movie, so you're saying we have a chance. So we've not much of a chance, right?
Always have a chance.
You always have a chance.
Always have a chance.
So as Madam Chair said, worth going for, and we'll see how the chips fall. But I think it's a great plan that you've laid out. We had a lot of options, right, that we went through, and this, to me, makes the most sense. So looking forward to the vote next meeting. So thank you.
Thank you.
And I absolutely, I know there's been a lot of discussion about whether this order is the right order, but I do think because it is, in fact, lower cost for the taxpayer and creates the most flexibility for the town and school space, that, that, those are absolutely the reasons to go in this direction.
And again, the MSBA may say, come into the process, and we have to talk about your priority. Let's, let's, let's tease that out. And, you know, with the MSBA, there is room, I think probably limited room for discussion. We did that with Sunita Williams. You'll recall, and you were very much involved in that. They wanted to have a school of about 430 students. You know, we have now over 540 students at Sunita Williams, so we were able to have them agree that yes, Needham's enrollment's different than neighboring communities, and so we'll increase it. So you can have a conversation, and hopefully that'd be the case with this, too.
Heidi, thank you for all of this work. I guess the only thing that concerns me is, you know, as you mentioned, every moment we delay, things get more expensive. And so I guess I'm just thinking about not hearing from the MSBA until December. And then if they choose not to invite us in, having to make that decision reasonably quickly before town meeting comes to, you know, sort of what is our next option? And I guess the part of that that concerns me is not, is educating the public. And I'm just wondering if you can sort of talk me through how you see that going so that I can understand what happens if, if, like you say, you know, we have a chance, but maybe not a great one.
Well, I might lean on the Chair and Vice Chair to talk a little bit about, you know, what that public process might be. I, you know, I think that you're right. There'll have to be some discussion about what would be on the warrant for May Town Meeting. Is the community ready to propose up to, I think, Anne, it's $2 million. Is that correct for a feasibility study? You're on mute, Anne.
1.7, I believe, for the Pollard.
1.7 million feasibility for Pollard. So there would have to be some decision-making between when the MSBA, I mean, there are a couple of decision trees. You can say, you know what, we'll try again next year. That's one option. But again, that increases costs and the need increases as well. Or you can be prepared to go to town meeting, and you can be prepared to go to town meeting and request the feasibility study, which would then begin the process and keep in line with these costs. Or Fall Town Meeting, and that may impact, I, you know, I think we talked about that at some point, that may impact cost to some degree, or it may not, but it would be all within the same fiscal year. So. But yes, a lot has to happen, right?
Did you have more? I was gonna say, so what would the harm be in knowing Plan A, Plan B, and Plan C, all the what-ifs? And I guess letting the town or people know that ahead of time, so it won't feel so rushed?
Absolutely. We certainly, we'll certainly work, you know, while the MSBA is considering, I know the school committee is interested in working on, you know, what are next steps? You know, if A happens, then what we do if B happens? So that certainly has to be part of the work. You know, the spring, and next summer, and into next fall.
Right.
I am certain we will be having those conversations.
I thought of this thinking out loud.
We've actually started a subcommittee working group, Andrea. I don't know if you wanted to talk about that, to actually sort of begin to think from some of the questions that have just come up tonight. It's underway.
Sure. We did create a new facility subcommittee of the school committee. We've had one meeting so far, but really starting to address exactly what you're talking about in terms of what, you know, how can we best educate the community? How, what are the, what are the stories that we need to tell? I mean, people, why do we want to bring six, eight back on one campus again? What are the different scenarios if the MSBA says no? What is the cost of delaying? What is, you know, we're thinking through sort of all of the different pieces of information that people need to know in order to be able to be ready to make that decision, hopefully. I think it's, you know, very much the school committee's hope that we keep on a steady march to get these projects started as soon as possible. So we're trying to just really set forth a plan to engage everybody because it will be an everybody situation, given the size of the projects.
I think once you have some, some of your early thoughts in order, it may make sense to think about more of a collaborative, multidisciplinary group that includes the Select Board and the FinCom, and maybe some other stakeholders, and bring them in as a, as a next step and really start to move from there.
And to your point, it's complicated because the, you know, the project for Newman, for example, there was an audience pretty much for Newman, and even to a degree for, certainly for Sunita Williams. For Mitchell, right now, that audience, those children, they, you know, they were just born, or they're not born yet. Parents, families there now, this is not a project for them. So getting their interest, which is, you know, to your point, and getting them involved and aware, is really an important lift.
Yep. It's always a challenge when we're just talking about the unborn. So that is the case with schools.
Yep.
So, great. Any other questions?
Just a comment. You said that journey begins with a single step. I think we're like 10 miles in. And I remember dealing with this back last, last winter.
Talking about the financing.
Yeah, and all this, this has been a long job, a long process. I think it's going to be much longer, obviously. My two cents, I can't go to sleep tonight unless I say, I really wish we were taking down Pollard in its entirety. But I'm not arguing it. But best, best wishes as we go to the MSBA.
Yeah, thanks.
And I will thank you for coming. I'm great. I'm gonna just have a moment here, though. I'm looking from me to Andrea to Tina, and I'm just going to say Wellesley Women Rule. So there you have it. I haven't had that before, so there we go.
I do want to thank, if I can, Hank and Anne, who really are, along with Barry Dulong and several others, the author of this, the filler in of this template of the SOI. Well, thanks to them, and feedback we've received from different committees.
I was going to say, to describe them as the filler in of the template is, does a disservice to the work that's involved.
And you know what I mean, don't you?
Organizing that template. We are grateful.
Thank you. It's all good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hank.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Thanks. That does bring us to the next agenda item, which is the Human Rights Committee on the Discrimination Complaint Process. So I welcome Tina and Marlene to come forward. This was before us, boy, four weeks, six weeks ago. I'm not sure exactly how long. I'm losing track of time. You've made some changes to the proposal because there were some elements that we were not comfortable with. So we'll see where we are now. There are definitely some significant improvements. I'm very excited. I have, I have a question. I'm sure there's some other questions left, but let's, let's go through and understand where we are today.
Also, I think last time, people didn't have enough time to even look at it. They didn't get it too early enough, so hopefully you had time to look at it.
I am sure that everybody has gone through them all to be ready.
So just to go over the, sort of the process, the overview of the process, we would take the complaint. We would then bring the case anonymously to the entire committee to determine collectively if it's something that is within our purview. So very vague, general overview of, of what the complaint is. If the committee decides yes, then the investigation begins. The last, the last time we spoke, there were issues raised regarding confidentiality. So we talked to, conferred with Chris Heap at Town Council and Katie. And the idea of executive session was raised to help mitigate some of those confidentiality issues. One thing to note with executive session and discussing these types of complaints, it really only applies to individuals. It does not apply to businesses. That is a rule and regulation that we can't get around. If we decide that it's something that we can continue moving forward with, then we try to find some sort of resolution between the complaint and the respondent, and then close the case. So it's just a very high-level overview of how this would work.
So you had a question.
So, so the question actually related to this issue around businesses, because I am trying to wrap my head around. So if you're a business, then you have no choice. But if you're brought into this process as the respondent, then all discussion happens in public before there's really a good understanding of what is.
No, not necessarily. So when the investigation is going on, that's with the investigator. So it's very possible that that would just be between the investigator and, and the respondent. It wouldn't necessarily have to come back to the, to a public meeting to the committee. Yes.
And conceivably, the result of the investigation could be, in fact, to turn it over. Again, you could look at that juncture, to turn it over to the town or to some other entity based on that, too.
Definitely. You know, if it's not, you know, the police department, town, you know, it could be a case of mental health. So, you know, there are definitely areas that, and we have resources lined up that we can refer cases to. The other thing that we talked about, discussed with Chris, was just the use of language, right? So that is when we're discussing anything in, in our meetings, we're not using names. We're not using, it's going to be, you know, as anonymous as we possibly can.
A citizen, a business.
Right.
Okay, we can use those generic terms.
Terms. That's correct.
Great. Let me turn it over to some others for questions. I don't know who would like.
Heidi, Madam Chair, thank you. I appreciate the work that's gone into this. I wanted to ask just a couple of different questions. First of all, with the point that Mary Ann just made about businesses. I would love it if there, if there was a possibility of formalizing this idea that the, the business and the investigator would not, that that relationship remains private unless you bring it into a public meeting. And then you're, what I just heard you say was that you could avoid bringing it into a public meeting. So I guess what I, what I'm asking is, just like you formalized the process to keep anonymous individuals, can we formalize the process, whatever the process that is, to anonymize businesses? That would be important, I think, until an investigation is complete. And then if I understand, mostly from offline discussion, if you were taking an individual and discussing that investigation in executive session, which I think you said would be the answer, what would happen at the end of that investigation? So whether the, whether, whatever resolution you come to, if the, you find that the complaint is valid, or you find that it's not valid, or whatever, however that works, what happens to those executive session minutes? And how, and what happens at the end? If that person is found, you know, not guilty, or, you know, whatever. Not in violation. I wonder, you know, if those minutes are released and it's still made public that they were investigated, but then not found in violation, that still seems to me to be something that, like, if it was me, I wouldn't want public. So how do we resolve that issue?
The minutes would be held. So ultimately, because of open meeting law, you know, after speaking with Chris, there, we cannot ensure absolute confidentiality. If somebody wants the information and they are willing to request it, that is something that we do have to release. But we won't be really, you know, that's not executive session minutes. We're not going to be releasing those to, to the public. So those would be held in a separate holding tank.
Yeah, that was my question, too. Like, how long do the minutes stay embargoed? And it's personnel, right? So is that personnel or? No, we're talking.
Something about character, right?
Madam Chair, there is.
Generally, they have to be released when the subject matter has been resolved or completed.
Right, so they will be released.
They could, yeah, by on-site request.
And that is, Katie, that would still be true for this. I'm thinking there are other models for for executive session. I don't know if they apply to municipalities that relate to records of this nature that may be embargoed for 50 years or until the parties that are involved have passed away, or, you know, there's other criteria for how things might be released in some other models.
So in our, in our, in our conversations with Town Council, this is under exemption. One of the ten exemptions that allows for executive session. So it is to discuss the reputation or character of an individual. So I, I agree with the Town Manager that I think when the, the matter is concluded, then the exemption would not apply. We certainly can check back with Town Council on that, though.
So, so that would suggest that it would be incumbent on the committee to have that discussion still even in executive session, to the greatest degree possible in an anonymous way, so that the records talk about the parties in a way that they would not be easily identifiable, right?
That's certainly the case, and they certainly could do that. I would just say, the individual being spoken about has the right to attend. And so that would be part of the record if they so chose to attend.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, that, that just says to me that then a person has a choice to attend and be part of the record and obviously be implicated in some portion of the proceedings, or to attend and like defend themselves, which I, I think that's a tough choice.
But it's not, it's not exactly to defend themselves. It's just sort of to be part of a conversation. This is not like a lawsuit, you know, this is, you know, it's, it's, it's different. And I'm actually thinking that primarily, we won't even have to go into executive session, that the, the investigator will be able to come to an agreement and an understanding with the complainant and the respondent. I really think that's the way most of it's going to go. But these are what ifs, because we need to have something in place, what if? Sometimes it's just a misunderstanding or it's an education piece.
And also a couple of the cases that have, well, we haven't had any cases, but people have actually come publicly to us. There's nothing we can do about that. If we have a citizen that is upset or wants to discuss a matter, they're more than welcome to come to our meeting as a public participant. We can't.
And they're fine with it. I mean, they have been, but there has not been a respondent because we don't, didn't have anything in place. So we couldn't bring in anybody.
So this is happening already?
Well, it has. Yeah. People come with complaints, but we can't, we can't do anything about them. We just can listen. So we, you know, we really haven't been able to do anything. And we've told people, we don't have a process in place. So we're not able to help them, which is unfortunate.
If I could add to Marlene's point, just in the examples that I've seen, it's not just that they're not able to offer the person making the complaint a path, but they're not able to hear the other side. Awesome.
I actually really appreciated the chart that preceded our presentation, the one that said, what types of cases will you process and laid out who you would hand off to and who you would consult with, and what kind of resources you could use. I found that chart really helpful in thinking about how somebody might come to you and what potential outcomes might be, because I think it clarifies really one of our concerns about what those pathways were earlier. That's a really critical chart.
Madam Chair?
Matt.
Thank you. And I know we've had this discussion before. Again, I am very concerned about privacy. And I know you've tried to address it, but nothing in town government because of the FOIA requests we get all the time, the release of executive session minutes, and especially businesses not being protected. To me, I think if someone is accused through the system, and now the weight of the town is behind what's called an investigation, if I get a letter or my neighbor got a letter, and you have an investigation from the town on town stationary, it's extremely intimidating. And as a business, I think it would be even more intimidating. So my concern is even if we try to make it private, it's going to cast a light on a business or an individual that maybe three years down the road, the individual, let's say, wants to run for public office, wants to do something and comes back to, you know, executive session minutes of a complaint that was filed, and then, of course, it was dismissed or found, you know, not to be valid. We've had on this board, releasing documents that we thought showed that we were culpable of something. And of course, there's always another side. Someone looks at and said, oh, wait, how about this, though? And reading between the lines. So you can, minutes or anything coming out of those can be looked at both ways, even at the end, the disposition is in favor of the accused. You know, we have the Attorney General, we have MCAD Police. I just think these are vehicles with expertise that the Human Rights Committee could help someone go to and say, you know, we'll do a conference call with the AG's office. We'll do a conference call with MCAD and, and help them through the process. I just, to have an investigative authority on the Human Rights Commission, and this board's gonna change. It's not just this board. Five years down the road, it might be, it's gonna be a different commission who might then want to do different things or have a different take on these complaints. And I think this can get out of hand. So we're flooded, like I said before, with information requests. I know it would get out there. And I just think at this time, I would just keep doing what we're doing, because I don't think we should be in, in this business. I do appreciate the attempt to make it anonymous. I'm upset about the business, and I understand why, because they don't have the exception one. But I know that the minutes would be released over time, and things will get out. And I'm just afraid of the fallout from this. So, thank you.
There is, if in fact, we were to consider saying, you know, don't take this to executive session, right? That, that you would have the option to go as far as you could, thinking about that chart that's earlier, to understand the issue and understand, is there a place that we can make a referral and make a connection that needs to be made? How, how do you think about that? Or what do you think about that? I feel like it's better than we're doing today, but maybe it's not.
I think it just depends on the case and the circumstance.
Yeah.
I think, you know, there are a lot of resources out there, but I also feel like, at the same time, a citizen or somebody that visits Needham, lives in Needham, works in Needham, there should be support.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, why have a Human Rights Committee if we can't hear complaints? That's the main purpose of Human Rights Committees. So I'm not quite sure what our role should be, if, if not that. And I think a lot probably wouldn't go to executive session anyway. I think that they, either they would be referred out or they could be resolved. So.
Madam Chair, I would just say not to debate. I think the Human Rights Committee has a tremendous impact on the town as far as education and, you know, providing our board with input. We've relied on you, you know, in certain instances that have come up and seminars. So I think there's a lot of education component in your charge that wasn't considering an investigative arm. So I think you do provide a wonderful service. I just don't think investigation should be one of them. Great question. You just, after executive session, can you flesh out the next step on the chart? Next steps presented and agreed upon? Is that in executive session? Are there awards? And what's going? What do you guys, how do you foresee that? The question example of it?
Yeah, I, I think that would be an executive session, how to move, how to move forward. After all, the information has been discussed, then how to move forward with, if we weren't able to come to some agreement.
Okay. And who comes to the agreement? Do you, do you make a ruling? Or do the parties have to agree to something? I mean, when you say come to agreement, what is?
Parties, the parties have to come to. And if, and if they can't come to an agreement, then we'd have to refer them out.
Okay.
And those referrals might be to, as I recall, to MCAD or some other similar organization? Or there's a presumption that that would be?
Yeah.
The most likely place, given a.
Yeah, again, it's gonna be dependent on the case.
Yeah, Madam Chair. So it seems like, you know, once getting to executive session and then the possibility from anybody being anonymous going public is kind of the toughest and biggest concern with all of this. But having the opportunity to hear and to get to the point, kind of like what Mary Ann said about getting to a point where then a referral or something could be made, but getting to that point, knowing that, that, and right now, we haven't been really able to do anything, you know, been able to listen. And thank you for letting us know. It's kind of what it's been. And I feel like to get a step closer, we're still not where we want to be. But I know how much work, and I feel like it's been over a year, two years of trying to get this, to get to this point.
Two years, three, I think.
Okay. It just seems like it's been, it feels like it's been forever. And I don't want that to fall short and to not applaud and, and respect and appreciate everything that's gone into this. But I think if we're able to make another step forward, that may not be exactly where this is ending up right now, but getting to a point where you can hear a little bit further, listen, and then help get them to a point where they feel like their story is going to be pushed in a way that is not going to come back on us from not keeping that business confidential or not keeping the people confidential without hearing both sides of the story and having to be one sided, whatever it may be. I feel like it's better than, than just saying that none of this is gonna work. So that's just what I'm thinking out loud. As much as I, I want to support and I want to be behind this, some of that is what gives me calls for pause is that we can't assure, and there's no definitive, definitive answer of, yes, this will stay, you know, private, or this will stay this. And knowing that, once it's concluded, anything in executive session can therefore be requested, makes it tough. But I appreciate, and, and I know how hard you've all worked for this. And if there, we can keep making modifications or come up with some kind of strategy or something to take it even further, then I'd be all in for helping to figure out whatever that is.
So it sounds to me like what you are recommending is that we would conduct the investigation. And if, in fact, we can't get people at that point to come to an agreement, then we would just refer out. And that would avoid all the rest of these pieces. Is that what I'm hearing?
I think that's true. The other thing I'm, I'm thinking about, Marlene and Tina, is that if, if we were to start with that approach, which, which is still anonymous, right? And if, if in that process, we could collect some statistics about what we're actually seeing, we might be able to demystify and maybe further understand what our real concerns are based on what we're seeing. And then we might have some other ideas about how we might protect for those circumstances. So I sort of feel like it's amorphous right now. And, and we're, we are worried with legitimate concerns, right, about the, the privacy of businesses or individuals. Okay. And, and so I'm wondering if that might be a, a way to at least start the process. And I don't know how other people feel about that, but that may be an approach.
I'd be comfortable, something like a pilot program where you can start the initial part, and then refer it off to MCAD or Attorney General, but not necessarily to be diving deeper in an investigation. You can bring the parties together and get something going.
And then if, and then if it doesn't get resolved, then?
Then that's MCAD's problem.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, if I may ask a question. So if, if the investigator or mediator, whatever, talks with the parties, and then needs to go back and confer with a colleague, how many people are on the Human Rights Committee? I'm, I'm ashamed to say I do not know.
There are 12 of them.
Okay. So you don't have any fears about coming close to a quorum or anything? So this doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to go back to a public meeting at any point during this process?
So I don't think there's an intent to go back and consult with colleagues. We, we've specifically avoided that as a part of this process for, for that reason, and for not having serial conversations around committee members and all of those issues.
The only time it goes back to committee is in the beginning, where we present the case anonymously to make sure that the committee feels it's a violation of human rights, that it's within our rights, because it might not be. Someone may think it's a human rights issue, but it may not be.
So I just want to make sure that you don't feel, I mean, you, you and I have had a conversation about this privately and talking through all these issues. And I, and you are one of the people who will be doing some of this mediating. And I just want to make sure that doesn't make you feel too out on your own, like unsupported?
No, because we can have another, we can consult with other people outside of this, not in a public meeting, but we can consult with another person.
Oh, okay. I thought that's what I had just said. Okay.
So, yeah, so that doesn't feel like out there all alone.
Okay.
Madam Chair? I'm just thinking about this practically, and that's why I'd like to see, I think, to Kevin's point, and I agree, it should, you know how I feel, but even if we had some type of, you know, change, and we did cut off the executive session, and then the next steps, if we didn't, I, I, I think we do need more clarification with the next step. Is it, is an apology? Is it, what is it? But that being said, if you, just to walk me through, someone complains that a business said something to them that they, you know, they, they thought it was racist or, or, so you would, they would come to you, and then you would then contact the business from the Human Rights Committee of the Town of Needham, and you would say to them, you have been accused of X, Y, and Z. Well, would you then go to the, then probably go to the place? Or would you, would you have them in?
No, because we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have them in, because it would be the person who has collected all the information from the complainant would have that information, and then we could go to the business and say that there's been a complaint, thus and so. And we'd like to hear your side of the story. You know, how do you see this? And then the person who's collecting the data would then ask if, depending on what the issue is, if the two parties would like to get together to discuss it. And if not, then we could just refer it out.
If that business upon that was like, I'm gonna hire an attorney, I'm not gonna speak with Human Rights Committee on this, just in case they don't want to somehow incriminate themselves, then the next step would be?
To tell the complainant that we can't move forward. There's no way that we can move forward, and they would have to take it somewhere else, because we don't have that ability.
Okay. Thank you.
I was gonna say, there was never an intent that this was any kind of a criminal process.
It's gonna, yes, my, my fear is it's going to seem that it's some, you know, an investigation does, for the average citizen, I think, could seem a little bit heavy handed, or be, you know.
Of concern. Katie?
I could just add, the chair pointed out this chart, and, you know, I think there's things that are very clearly handed out to agencies, people to consult with, you know, the category of what, what kind of HRC is left with, and realistically, it's happening today. Business complaints, neighbor, naval complaints. MCAD looks at, you know, the legal statutes of where you barred from employment, where you barred from housing, where you barred from public accommodations. So it's, there's very clear parameters where MCAD has authority. And HRC, you know, a year from now, if they were doing this, would know, write those referrals right off. There is this missing bucket of things that are not, you weren't barred from employment, you weren't barred from housing, you just had an experience that bothered you, and you want to talk to somebody. And so I think maybe it's more about a referral system and a facilitator of a conversation. And I think what I've heard from HRC and their conversations coming up with this is, we'd like to be an objective facilitator of those conversations that don't fit cleanly anywhere else. So I think maybe it's like a language component also, like not investigations, not, you know, this is not legal. We, you know, I think we're trying to be clear that it wasn't that, but there is this missing chunk that's still just there, that I, that I think this was trying to get at.
Well, and I, I also think so often, sometimes these things are people who want and need to feel heard. And I think the ability to feel heard will let us, again, start to build a better base for thinking in aggregate about what some of the challenges are in a way that we don't understand today. If, if it's a process that people feel at least safe that somebody will listen to them and hear them. And I think right now, that's the question is, where do you even go to be heard? So it's a, it's a challenge, right? Because it's not that I dismiss or don't acknowledge the concerns that Matt has. I mean, the concerns that Matt has. I mean, they, they are both true. It's clearly an and situation. But I think in some cases, not even being able to listen to where people are uncomfortable, right? Or where they feel like they've been treated poorly means that we don't have visibility into places where that might be happening frequently, or there's something that somebody's doing that they may not even be conscious of doing. But that is setting up certain situations.
Madam Chair? I'm just thinking, you know, as we have this conversation about the roles of different individuals, for example, someone called this board with a problem like this, I can see the chair calling maybe a business just on their own, saying, I'm not speaking for the board. But we received this complaint and what's going on over there and having that type of discussion and, or, and maybe it could be from the Human Rights. I'm just spitballing here because we have, but Human Rights Commission say, I'm the chair of the Human Rights Commission. Someone came in last night with this complaint. I'm not speaking for the board, but X, Y, and Z is going on. And I think that would be break down a lot of those barriers of instead of a letter coming through and say, hi, I'm so and so, the Human Rights Commission is going to conduct something, we got a complaint to the, I just think that, that individual touch might allay some of these concerns that I have.
We had not planned on a letter.
Okay. Or I'm saying the force of the board, we're counting.
Just, it's just to have a conversation. So we're, we're not planning to send a letter on a letterhead or anything like that.
Yeah. And I think I'm with you to that point. And then, but when I get down to like conduct investigation, also this language, the Katie's using.
We have to figure out what, I mean, it's, it's the right term. We just have to figure out what's happening.
Right.
We need to, so on both sides of the, on both sides of the, of the issue.
Right. So th- this is where I think the ice gets thin for me and I'm starting to worry about it. But complaint intake, intake is great. Talking to people sort of confidentially, discussing with other people and even bringing them together, I'm okay with. But when you start saying, all right, now we're going to, you know, we, and even I think the judge making a discussion or judgment, if there has been a legitimate complaint is great. And then I think you should go to referral. But just here, the dice is getting thin as we go down this flow chart.
So maybe conversation is better than investigation would make you more comfortable?
Yeah. I mean, I think it, but you know, how long we, sometimes though a conversation is such, you feel like the scarlet letter and one's getting if you're not careful. So I like the first part of your flow chart. And I think beyond that, I almost wonder like, does this work for now? Could you go away and work on this and the rest we'll see about if, if thing, if warranted, but might be, it might be getting in too deep.
Yeah. So sort of pilot it this way for 18 months or something and then see how it goes and see if, what kind of complaints we get, if we get any. Because it's going to take a while if we do this to educate people that we're, we now can do this to let people know, to publicize that we are here if you need us.
And you will have a process for people come to you. It might, may not be as, as great as depth as you want, but we've got something.
Right. Yeah. We just need your blessing to be able to do something.
I understand.
Madam Chair, may I? I just want to say thank you. And I know we've been poking at this for a long time and I appreciate your patience because I know you've worked really hard on this and I can understand that it might be frustrating. But I do think what you're doing is really important. I, I think it's really hard to say that Needham is a welcoming community and here we are, you know, that we're actively trying to welcome people in if we don't have mechanism to address when, you know.
An ability to hear when we're unwelcoming.
Yeah, yeah. So, so just, I just hope you understand that even though we're talking about, you know, what happens if, and this worst case scenario, that we appreciate your efforts and that this is really important and I appreciate it. Thank you.
I have nothing further. I'd just like to see a modified, maybe condensed flow chart or application and then maybe a little more detailed, not to go crazy, but yeah, it is a phone call, you know? Here are the three steps. And now that we have only three, it's a phone call to so and so followed up and maybe you say a certain thing. You know, you're not being investigated. This is not a legal claim. We're just, we got this something kind of structure on so that every reach out is the same and you know, there's some continuity. So maybe pare down and that would satisfy, it sounds like many members of the board.
Are we able to modify and, and vote on a modification this evening?
I'm not sure that we're, I'm hearing that we're able to do that this evening. But I, I too have some suggestions and I hate to send you back again, but I feel like each time we're getting closer and closer and I don't think this is a forever process. But I am, I am thinking if we could come back and look at it, maybe take the earlier chart actually as our basis and build out from there and look at something that talks more about that you will work with both parties, that you will work to have a facilitated conversation, which is really what you have gone through training for frankly. All right. And then based on the outcome of that conversation, that either the parties may have agreed to a resolution or that you would find a place to refer. And I think if we could craft it that went to that as an ending, that that would be better. And then I think it would be wonderful, actually, if the Human Rights Committee had some tracking system that whoever worked as the facilitator for the conversation could at least, you know, structurally enter a little bit of data about what happened or, or what type of issue it was so that we would be able to start to understand the shape of this.
Right. And then that's part of, we, we have that as part of.
And then could we?
Yeah, I'd rather, yes, and have it in front of us.
And then could we perhaps commit to reviewing the procedure, like, like you said, 18 months out or a year out and see?
Make sure that.
So if we thought about it as a pilot, that we would come back after a year to review, I'm presuming you would review it in committee, but that you'd be able to come back to talk to the select.
Yeah, just to make sure that it's enough that things are working.
So I just, I do want to say that I understand your concerns, but you, there is discrimination happening here in the city, in this town.
Yeah.
Um, my, I, my kids go to Pollard. I get an email at least once a month, once every six weeks about something that's happened at their school. So I'm going to keep fighting for this because I do not want them to live in a community where they do not feel safe.
Yeah.
I understand. I own a business here, so I get it. I'm a business owner. But this is.
It's important.
It's important.
We agree.
So we will take your suggestions and we will be back.
Thank you.
Tina and Marlene. I thank you. I know this has been way too long.
Okay. We'll figure it out.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm being asked for a five minute recess. We've been going for three hours at this point. So we will return at eight thirty and I thank you to the people who are being patient with us. Was I squirming? No, but you often do.
It's worth standing up.
What if someone wants?
Hello there. Hello. Thank you. See what's out there. I staffed three committees. Two out of the three committees, I don't know how, well, actually function. Just because of schedules. What's the legal status? So both the House and the Senate have passed as part of their included in that somehow. And it's in discrepancy between the two. There's a discrepancy about two or three cocktails. Among other things, but it's more than likely to happen. So they'll extend the governor's executive order probably till April one, twenty twenty five, or either April may but there's still an expiration.
Yeah, there's still an expiration. And you sort of understand why it could be a beloved hot potato and so therefore it may always be that. But I, I do think that I think most people would be aligned if they had the, at least as an option. Oh, absolutely.
In my town, one town meeting via Zoom. So people that didn't have access to actually have the local middle school technology to be able to, you know, vote. People who couldn't physically get there. So in order rise to a hall or so. Phone numbers, they would call and they would have a super pass. Six, seven, five, two. I voted yes. So to tally all of those, they have to wait towards the committee. So many. So anyway, but I mean, creative. And yeah, commitment.
How are you doing? Excellent. Your second to last meeting. I know. Yes. So here we are. It's a loving news. Soon as a young man when I started, yeah. Kids, young, now they're college, going to college. So yeah, but it's been great. Yeah. And shall see. Yeah, yes. How are you doing? How's? Good. Good. Excellent. You liking everything?
I mean, it's not going on.
Yeah. I know, look, I can't believe all of the information. So it's terrific. Yeah, that's great. It's almost like I wonder if it was ever a building originally built exterior, which is small and have a light. That was a great room. Trying to get my friend who owns Needham Gardens, they put a hardware garden. Or just some type of. Yeah, they have.
Where did you all come from?
Where we went to. Uh, not too far. Somerville Mall was also. Is, there's nothing, right? I mean, it looks messy out there. But usable space. Yeah. I grew up in Worcester and they have 25 inches. Yes.
Have they really gotten in the last, like today they did?
At one thirty in the afternoon, they had 25 inches. So I guess also.
All right. Um, if the Needham Channel can bring us back. Thank you, Needham Channel. Magic, magic. We are back in session and we have Amy Hailson here. Good evening. Thank you, Amy, and our folks from Stantac and we're grateful to have you here and you can both introduce yourselves in just a second. So this is the parking study, the much awaited parking study that we're looking forward to inform several other things. And some of us attended a session a month ago, six weeks ago. Once again, it's a blur and I can't remember exactly when it was. January 26th. So there was an open house where we got to wander around and look at all of these charts. I'm grateful for the recommendation. So I look forward to your taking us through it.
Perfect. Well, without further ado, I would like to hand it over to Katrina Meyer and Jason Schreiber from Stantac to walk us through their findings.
Thank you, Amy. We're gonna kind of brief you on the process of how we got here. Again, I'm Jason Schreiber, Senior Principal with Stantac and I've been the principal in charge for this effort. Katrina has been the Deputy Project Manager and she'll be sharing some of the key data with you in a little bit, but I wanted to kind of get you all caught up on how we got here really briefly. We actually started way back in November with data collection. That's a lot of what Katrina is going to share with you. We spent some time evaluating that over the holidays and trying to work through recommendations rather quickly. In the span of only four months, we've gone from knowing nothing to at least feeling like we know a lot, which is pretty fast for something like this. And along the ways, you know, there was a couple engagement opportunities. We'll summarize some of the feedback that we got through that. There was also a survey. I got over a thousand responses and that's all been really helpful and weighing in on this. One of the key things that we always try to do at the beginning of any study, however, is establish some clear goals and these on screen are the goals that were laid out by Amy and others and their RFP, but as we begin to discuss with them, what is the right approach to parking? And ultimately the, the top row is basic things. We're there to measure, we're there to document, we're there to try to make things work better and, and hopefully make the system be more efficient. We also know that we need to think towards the future and the bottom row talks a lot about that, where we want to be able to align with long-term goals and support the broader economy for both the town and its residents and its businesses. And of course, how that might inform future decisions in zoning and certainly future opportunities such as your, your downtown master plan. So with that sort of framing everything, I'll turn it over to Katrina to talk through our parking inventory and utilization.
Awesome. Thanks, Jason. So as Jason mentioned, the first phase of our project, which we started back in November, included really detailed data collection about the parking inventory and how it's being utilized. So the map that's on screen right now is the detailed inventory for Needham Center. We'll move on to the heights in subsequent slides, but that will show similar data. So the map here includes a comprehensive inventory of all on-street and off-street parking as well as private and public parking. So this category in the navy color on screen, the largest category in the pie chart called off-street restricted parking, this is basically like private parking, so not part of the public supply typically associated with a particular business or building, but we include that as part of the holistic inventory. And as you can see, that's the majority of the parking that's available in Needham Center. About two thirds are that private parking and then one third is the public parking in the center. And then an even smaller fraction of that is the on-street parking. When we think about Needham Center, the, what we're calling the center's core is a place where there is a lot of demand and you'll see that on subsequent slides. But for this slide, we're just highlighting this core area with the black dotted outline is really where you have great front door access from parking directly to restaurants. But it's also within a short three-ish minute walk from most of that off-street parking as well. So this next map that I'm showing is getting into utilization. So we captured parking utilization for six different time periods throughout the day. And what you're seeing on screen here is noon, which is the peak time where parking is the busiest.
In Needham Center.
In the center. Yes. Yeah. And this is when we're looking at the center as a whole. I'll show on the next slide when the core area is the busiest. But for Needham Center as a whole, it peaks in noon, at which time everything is about 63% occupied. But of course there are certain hotspots. The map, the darker orange color and green color shows parking lots, including many of the public parking lots that are a little bit more full, above 60%. Including many of the public parking lots that are a little bit more full, above sixty percent um at this noon time period. If we look at the core specifically, as expected with all the restaurant activity, this peaks at six P M instead of at noon. Um, during which time the core itself is eighty-eight percent full. Um, so definitely a difference. For the core versus the whole center. Um, now I'll move on to the heights. So again, the private off-street parking makes up a large share of the parking supply. The public uh on-street parking. Is a little bit larger of a share in the heights here, about one-sixth of the total supply. Um, but there are a diversity of on-street parking categories with different time limits and such. Taking a look at the utilization, noon is also the peak time for Needham Heights. Um, but the occupancy level is a little bit less high. Um, or rather, the utilization level is a little bit less high than it was in the center at sixty-three percent at noon. But some of, again, those public lots, including the Markley Road Lot, and then the lot behind Center at the Heights, as well as the Trader Joe's Lot. Are much more full um than the average at six, at um fifty-three percent. We did look at a core area as well for Needham Heights, capturing most of that public on-street parking right in the center. And it's a little bit similar to the um to Needham Center in the sense that there's a second peak at six P M. But it's not as intense as what we saw in Needham Center's core. Two more um sets of graphs for you guys to look at here. The first one is just an overall summary of public parking only. So before what we were looking at, I talked about how we included that private off-street parking. If we just look at public parking. Um, you see some nuances here where the six P M is showing up as a peak in Needham Center. Um, whereas if we look at the restricted parking, um, which includes um the off-street and the public parking. You can see six P M is much, much less utilized. So there's a little bit of an imbalance there between what parking is available and how it's made available. Um, I'll move along to a quick summary of the engagement unless you want to add anything. All right. Um, so as, as Jason uh and Amy mentioned, we did a survey which had great participation. We had over one thousand responses. Folks were able to complete the survey twice, one for Needham Center and one for Needham Heights or or just pick one. Um, so we got a lot of great responses. We were able to hear from some business owners as well as employees, uh in addition to many residents and visitors. Just to highlight a few key takeaways here, um, the, we were very pleased to be able to get some employees. Who work in the center and the heights to respond to the survey and. A proportion of them mentioned about parking on-street. So this gives us a window into how maybe not all of the folks working in the center and heights. Are taking advantage of the permit program and some are instead choosing to park on-street. Another thing I'll highlight is how, we ask folks, how far are they able to park? Um, from where they want to go or rather, how close are they able to park to where they want to go? Um, so you know, well, a lot of times people feel stressed about this. In the survey, many folks report that they are in fact able to find parking. Um, just a few blocks away from their final destination. As mentioned, we did an open house in the end of January, had about fifty folks come on through, including um many of you guys. And we heard a lot of great uh feedback and and input about parking. We heard about signage from a lot of people. That um there could be better wayfinding signage, as well as more clear signage about who can park where. And we heard a lot about multimodal concerns and folks being interested in not focusing exclusively on car-oriented transportation. And then finally, for our engagement, we talked specifically to business stakeholders. We had a round table with folks in the center and folks in the heights. Um, and we learned a lot about the permit program, how employees use that, as well as some concerns from business owners um about patrons. All right.
Thanks. So um in your packet, there's a lot more information that kind of summarizes this. I'm actually gonna. Ignore a lot of that and just shoot straight to the punchline for brevity. Maybe we can finish up in twenty minutes or so and we can have a conversation, which would be best. These are the six kind of key findings that are explained in that packet. The first and foremost finding of a study like this is, I think, the most important and significant one. You have hundreds of empty spaces in the center and also hundreds of empty spaces in the heights. At the peak of the peak of the peak, which means when it's not the peak of the peak of the peak, you have many, many, many hundreds. That's a parking garage or two of empty spaces today. I don't encourage you to ever consider building parking unless all of a sudden there was lots of development that hasn't happened in a lifetime or two. However, you do have a management problem because finding those vacant spaces is not always easy. Some of it is just information, some of it is about incentives, and we're gonna talk a little bit about that. One of the primary things that makes it hard to find those vacant spaces. Is the pricing. You just have flat pricing. It shuts off at six P M, as we'll elaborate in a minute. That doesn't really reflect the usage patterns whatsoever, and pricing is the number one thing to incentivize people to do the right thing and go park further away where it might be cheaper or free. Tied into that is that because of that pricing system probably not working so well. You, we've already sleuthed this out. There are employees gaming the system. And it's in part because they can, it's cheap, you know, you're coming in for evening, it pays a couple hours a meter as you start your shift. Before the customers show up, the meter shut off at six. That's cheap, right? Versus buying a permit. Those permits are restricted to only employees. It's an issue. We'll talk a little bit about how that can be changed. And then it also winds up in your enforcement system, pretty much chasing the employees around. In other words, you're chasing regulars, you're chasing the lifeblood of the community. To get them to move around when you're not actually providing the right options for them. So it's a silly game of cat and mouse. And ultimately, we know that another important part of this, and it's good that you are having considerations about your center and your master plan. Some of that remote parking, people just like literally in interviews, didn't really know about it, didn't want to go there, didn't know about the Dedham Street Lot, didn't really think it was easy to walk to X Y Z places. So we want to think about. Those types of things as being able to be improved. So I'm gonna run you through thirteen recommendations, but I'm gonna focus on the first five here first. And spend more time there. These are the most important parking-related recommendations. All the rest I will run through in just a minute. But one of the key takeaways from Katrina's data is that the parking pricing that you have now is not at all responsive to the man that's on the ground. And these maps here on the bottom show on the left noon and on the right six P M, just excerpts from earlier that pretty much say in that little core red zone. You see those colors of red and orange and heavy parking activity at noon or in the evening. But then just steps away. There's lots of parking that is free, that's not being used. And there's no real incentive, particularly at six P M to go there. But even at noon, the price is so low, it's, you know, there's maybe a little bit of wayfinding, we'll talk about that, but ultimately, we need to do something with the pricing system. It so happens that you're lucky. You haven't changed it in a very long time. Everybody else has. So even communities like Newton, who've been really in a battle politically over how can we change our parking prices? Have changed their parking prices and are continuing to say, we need to bring our parking prices up more. Belmont's an example. Wellesley knows, for instance, even though they charge a similar rate, they are forcing everybody to pay for a minimum of two hours because it's so low. They know. That they need to get to a more rational market responsive rate. We like to throw in comparisons at the bottom, like if somebody's coming for two hours, they're gonna spend a dollar to park at your fifty cent an hour meters. But they're gonna drop a lot more money. They're ready to drop a lot more money. And part of the point of pricing changes is to acknowledge that and recognize that everybody has a different temperature and flavor for it. So our first recommendation. Is you need to be a little more performance-based, dynamic in your pricing, adjusting prices in response. You have data, so you can respond to that demand better. And particular, your evenings. I mean, it's sort of a nice little thing to say, hey, it's free to park and it's not. If you look at that data, I can't find a parking space on a good summer evening trying to go to a restaurant anywhere on the street. That's the complete opposite experience that I might want as a, as a patron. So right now, we're saying in this core zone that has pricing on that map there on the right, we would extend the time until eight P M. But also not start it as early because there's just not that much demand. So we would say, don't start pricing until ten A M and have that go until eight P M. And we think it should look something more like this, something that is a little more performance-based. So in that core red area, we'd say it should probably go up. But in those yellow zones that are a little bit further away, we're starting to see the utilization drop off. We say it should be lower. Maybe it's keep it at the same price, but also clearly establish places where it's free, as we're showing in blue. And we should make that a very clear opportunity on surrounding streets, certainly in the Dedham Lot. You'll notice we're saying in here that both the chapel and the Chestnut Street Lots should probably be priced in that secondary tier, at least at fifty cents an hour. In all of these cases. One of the more important things is there shouldn't be a time limit. And I'll show you later, people don't even stay anywhere near on average as long as your time limits. Regulate how long they want to stay for price. If you set the price right. They'll realize they're gonna stay long, I'll park in a more remote place, or if I'm gonna stay for a short time, I don't care paying more to be able to get that space out front. And the heights. Very similar pattern today. Again, that's your meters at a set price. We would do the same thing, make it ten to eight instead of eight to six. Um, and again, just a really small core area where there's that higher demand up by the restaurant blue and others near the train station. But further down Highland, the demand is not as bad, lower price, and some streets should absolutely be free. So if we're able to manage the customer visitor short-term type parking through a better approach to pricing. We still have to deal with those employees and that long-term parking that we were showing sometimes is creeping on-street. And right now, the way the permit program works right now, it's a little bit administratively heavy for you, but for. People to buy into it, it's a one-time big upfront payment. Actually, it's really small. It's only two hundred dollars a year, which is effectively like fifteen cents an hour to park. So first of all, that should be higher, but it should be a monthly thing. It should be an easy transaction that somebody can make, and we really think that it needs to maybe open up to other people. Because in particular, long-term people other than employees of the downtown don't have a chance to park long-term at all. They're in violation. So it's pretty much saying you can't be a resident downtown, you can't be an occasional commuter in downtown, you can't be a business person who hasn't bought a permit in downtown. You know, can't even explore and stay for more than two hours in most places. So many communities have implemented permit programs, is just an example from Melrose, but ultimately, the idea is that you want to be able to create. A better and clearer, long-term parking supply, but in the right places. I mean, that's really the key thing. So again, performance-based. We would say whatever parking is still permit-based in the chapel street lot. And certainly the portion of the Chestnut Street Lot, those are your prime lots. They should have a monthly pass, but it should probably be higher than the monthly equivalent that they're currently getting today, which is under twenty bucks a month. And a lot such as the Dedham Street Lot should just be cheaper, but there should also be free spaces further away. A very simple tiered permit program that's responsive. It's a lot of part-time workers are just not ready to fork out annually. And will be very responsive to pricing and will get off of your core meters and will go out to a place where they know they have a spot that they can't currently obtain. In the heights, it probably only needs to be mostly the core lot by the commuter rail, which is M B T A managed, but then maybe some spaces in the Markley Road and then remote free. Parking. There'd be a timeline. The only place you put in a time limit is on that remote parking, so you didn't get scoff laws. You don't want that. So another key recommendation related to permits is sharing. So you can only do so much in your public parking system. That's what the permits are all about. But you might eventually be able to sell permits on private spaces if you begin to get into shared parking arrangements with businesses. And there's an example of one that exists in the heights right here on screen. The post office shares their spaces with the Coco Fit Club. There's another example of it that happens right here in the center as well with Citizens Bank. These are opportunities that are done regularly privately, but oftentimes. A community can incentivize that. And sometimes it's in return for things like, I will clear and maintain your parking spaces, Citizens Bank, if I can use them for patrons at night. But it can also be a financial arrangement. And we see plenty of opportunities. Throughout the center, for instance, we're showing them in red, sort of in the backs of parking lots, to add dozens of spaces. Without impacting any one of those private landowners one iota, because those are empty spaces today, because I showed you the charts, they're not being used. The backs of these lots are not being used. You can just approach landowners. There can be a revenue share, there can be an in-kind thing, the snowplow, put up signs, whatever it is. Make it clear to them what are the liability ranges, which usually they already have the insurance, so there is no liability issue. And it can help pull employees into those underutilized spaces, putting eyes in parking lots and helping for the overall security of the downtown. I showed you Walgreens lot highlighted on that slide and the heights, it would work very well for the lot behind Starbucks next to Markley Road. In both of these cases, you can add to that long-term supply and pull all those employees off-street, which would be very beneficial for downtown patrons. The fourth recommendation here, and this is again, the third related to employees, has to do with simply just designating. Long-term parking. I don't even need to sell a permit for long-term spaces. I just need to let people to know, like they do in Wellesley. Go over on these signed spaces that are further away and you can park there, even residents in downtown. Who've been saying, I would be nice to be able to get a space besides just the one that's with my unit sometimes. And so it's very simple, you know, for instance. In the center, May Street, Pickering, uh, Green, these are all opportunities where there's no cars there at night at all. It'd be a great opportunity for residents, even in the daytime, they're not heavily used, opportunities for um long-term further away, you know, people are price sensitive. Walk a couple blocks, not really that far away, but it's a great way to clear employees out by giving them that opportunity. Um, and the heights, the same thing. Mellon Road. Is a great opportunity, even lower Highland is something where you could be able to put these long-term spaces. Um, and the idea is that it doesn't necessarily need a permit. You know, if it gets oversubscribed and everybody wants to go there, you can include it in your permit system, but it's one of these things you could almost do tomorrow. So another set of findings from your packet that are really important here is that if we're able to solve a lot of. The customer issues and the employee issues. We then have to deal with the fact that you have a two-hour time limit system, and I'm recommending getting rid of those for a reason, because everybody says they only stay about ninety minutes on average. Other than an employee, visitors are staying for dinner and coming in and getting out. I'd love them to stay longer. So the two-hour timeline pretty much says, you gotta get out of town. So let's get rid of that. But ultimately, that two-hour time limit as it is now, has, as I hinted earlier, your parking enforcement officers literally chasing employees. Mostly hourly workers who are gonna be feeding meters because it's that cheap around town. And it's just like, you know, me as a customer on the outside, I don't want to get a ticket. When it says there's a two-hour timeline and there's a meter, I'm gonna get out of town, right? But it's the regulars who know they can roll their car. And so in the end, we're chasing around a lot of people. If we can get rid of. The two-hour time limit, if we can also make the span work more effectively and actually have enforcement. Between six and eight P M, which is when you get some of your highest demand, which really won't be that difficult because most customers are paying, then you could maybe do as Pittsfield does. And many other communities do, which is turn those parking enforcement officers into ambassadors and to people say, hey, this is where you can park to be friendly. They can. Still be writing tickets at the times that need to be written. We can focus the enforcement at the times when it's really needed. But we can get away from worrying about a lot of the turnover. A lot of technologies are out there to be able to manage parking with um. Uh, plate reader devices and other electronics. We'll talk a little bit about some of those technologies in a little bit. But many communities really try to like add a, like a warm touch list. We've introduced new parking meter rates. We've increased the core. We thought this is a great thing to do. But your first ticket is forgiven. Here's an information sheet instead that says where you could have parked to save money. Changing the face of enforcement from adversarial to more of a carrot approach. So those are the core five, and as we head towards nine, I'm going to march through these remaining ones quickly, if you will work with me fast. One of the most important things that we're. One of the most important things that we're seeing happen all around the country, and I'm sure it's happening here, is that Uber, Lyft, DoorDash are coming. There's pickup, drop-off, double parking. I've seen it happen repeatedly on Great Plain and on Chapel all the time. We need to have more spaces designated for this. We need to have more flexible curves. We need to be able to maybe even think to the next step of converting parking spaces to bicycle parking spaces. Too many people want bike lanes and cities are wiping out parking for bus lanes. But the fear is always, well, I'm going to lose my parking. Well, how can you manage to go about this? Well, it turns out, you know, we counted the cars. You could easily, as this map on the right shows, put in a loading zone or two that is designed specifically for short-term pickup, drop-off, for all those types of things, without even doing anything you do tomorrow and completely eliminate double parking and create a lot of convenience. We had people at the open house saying, there's just too busy. I can't get in. I just need a quick in and out. Pizza shop guys, I just need a quick in and out. We don't have that regulation. Very simple, and it's actually under very high demand to do it. This is an example of how it might look in the heights, a few places along Highland, even in Markley. Over by the center, there's places to be able to do this without impacting access and operations at all. But what's really interesting is we then, we also went through the calculation of saying, what if, what if you went to a future, and maybe it's not that distant for you, where you wiped out one side of parking on every one of your downtown streets, Great Plain, Chapel, Highland, even Highland up in the heights? Because we had to put in tons of Uber spaces, or maybe you decided you wanted to put in bike lanes or whatever it is. And all we did was take that data and move it around. And we figured out that if we just moved all the cars to the other side of the street and to the places that had occupancy, we would only have at six P M. At that point, when your downtown core is so busy, we would only have to move forty-eight cars into parking lots where you have well more than twice that available just in your public supply, much less the hundreds available and the private supply if you were sharing. So the point is, I'm not telling you, you should wipe out half of the on-street parking near downtown. But if you wanted to take out more to do other things as part of your center master plan, it isn't a supply problem. It is absolutely not a supply problem. You have the supply right there nearby, and the displacement is literally that few of cars in the worst-case scenario. So how would people know to go to these other places? They're incentivized to go to the cheap parking. Wayfinding, of course, oftentimes the very first recommendation in any parking study, absolutely an important recommendation here. A very streamlined system that works. We've got some basic recommendations for systems that you'll develop here, but it's simply turning people at a decision point to know and then signing them to the entry. You know, it's not clear to me exactly where the Chestnut Street entry lot is until I'm on top of it. The sign's too small. Basic things like that are really important. And there's lots of great precedents out there for doing things that are beautiful. I know historic concerns are always an issue with signing. Similarly, in the heights, it doesn't take a lot. I mean, literally six signs can really help improve wayfinding very much in both of these or certainly in the heights. I mentioned earlier, payment technologies. This is maybe something a little more long-term. But the idea of upgrading meters to something smart is something lots and lots of communities have done, and there's great benefit to it. A lot of survey folks said, no, we want to continue to pay by cash. We like the coins. Trust me, that will change if you actually did this. Everybody, anybody loves to be able to walk away from the car they just parked and walk into the restaurant and tap their app and pay to park. That can happen almost overnight with just the electromechanical meters that you have today. But ideally, you'd bring in a smart meter or kiosks. And I won't get into all the details of, you know, what are the pros and cons of those, but it's certainly a decision that you should be thinking about as well as having them linked to those ambassadors who are doing the enforcement to more easily know when a car isn't paid. And that helps make the enforcement more efficient. You need less people to do it, and they can spend more time helping customers. Your zoning, as I mentioned earlier, that whole second row of important goals is really something that we've spent a lot of time on. This is just a, a quick recommendation, but ultimately, many communities, the example on the right is a table from Somerville where they've introduced sharing at different locations within the city at different times of day to more or less reduce the overall amount of parking that's required. And it's aimed at reducing resident parking requirements, especially in most places, particularly that are walkable, transit-friendly, like both of these villages are. But ultimately, you guys need a lot of fixes in our professional opinion. And it has to do with the fact that, you know, we counted less than one car per residential unit in these study areas. And your zoning is requiring more than fifty percent more than that. And in every single one of those land use categories on that table, you're requiring way more than the conservative engineering standards. Your downtown economies are very adversely impacted by your zoning code right now. So there's a list of recommendations there that have to do with hoping to reduce the minimums, eliminating them maybe, even introducing maximums. A lot more flexibility for mixes of uses and a lot of flexibility in where parking can go. Making smaller businesses waive and change of uses waive from those types of requirements. There's even ways, if you're afraid of waiving things, to make it still not a waiver process by formalizing the in-lu fee program that you started. And, and ultimately, all this ties into good transportation, demand management sense for communities. Certainly anywhere near Boston, this has been a very successful approach in multiple communities. We're on ten of thirteen, getting close. And this is also a very simple one. I think it's sort of intuitive to many of us, but man, it feels difficult, which is you've got a lot of lots like this example in West Concord that are jammed up against one another. And, and the picture on the top, those are the parcel lines. And all those landowners got together and said, yeah, just because this is my land, we need this shared supply. They ripped down the fences years ago. They treated it like a shared lot. It's a private parking lot. And the idea is that they just recognize it's more efficient to share the supply. Because if you take down in this example from the center behind the, the House of Pizza off of Great Plain, if you just took down a section of that fence, you could at the very least make it easier to walk through there, as we'll show in a minute. But in particular, you can make the parking supply be more efficient. It could be part of sharing, like we talked earlier as a recommendation, particularly if you're to go up to the heights between the Markley Road lot and the Starbucks lot, combining those two, just eliminating a little bit of a median as suggested, can actually increase the parking supply because there's lots of inefficiencies in that, in those two lots right next to each other. And you have a simple shared agreement. There are still guarantees for employees that want parking, but you can increase the supply and make it easier for customers. And that's the number one user that anybody agrees is important for these areas. Number eleven, multimodal improvements. It's sort of tied into all the above, the idea of being able to make it easier to walk to that remote parking, to those new shared parking lots. And in the end, we really think this is pretty low-hanging fruit. There's simple things. And as part of your master plan, you'll work through some of these solutions. Now, this is suggesting a crosswalk on Denham Street just to get over to the Chestnut Street lot more easily, not down, not at the intersection, but halfway down. Very easy to do. Actually, somebody once had marked a temporary crossing there. Let's make that permanent or make a connection that is shown on the lower left behind the House of Pizza to get through, like I had said, to that parking lot and behind would be great. Great gestures to just make it easier to walk around. And so many people who actually have businesses on Great Plain Ave say, oh, that lot back there? Oh, yeah, I didn't even think about that. I like to go there. It's literally behind their businesses. But they today have to walk around the corner, past Little Spoon, down along Denham Street to be able to come in to get to that parking lot. And it's silly. In the heights, there's honestly an opportunity to really make the Markley Road lot better by installing a missing sidewalk there. But there's also just crosswalks on Highland Ave, a little bit further south. It's really funny, parking on the C V S side of Highland South towards Mellon is busy, but parking on the other side of the street is always not busy. And it's there, just no way to get to it, a crosswalk or two. Second from last, bicycle parking. So one parking space, and I hinted at this earlier, about how you could better manage the curb, but you could have drop-off, pick-off, or maybe bike rack. One parking space can easily be ten, fifteen bikes in a nice bike parking corral. And lots and lots of data says that a bicycle patron is spending no less than five times as much in your downtown as a parking patron. You go look at it, every study, anybody's ever bothered to look at this, is maybe that's a short-term thing for the next ten years as we're getting more and more people excited in the downtowns and bicycling. But take advantage of it. You lose one parking space and you suddenly can't increase sales. It's really just a matter of following some basic standards from the Association of Pedestrian Bicycle Professionals to be able to put in some of these types of racks. And it's something that you can do almost overnight to really improve things. And last, but not least, and it's kind of funny to come to this because this would also often normally be a very first recommendation. Yeah, need some basic clarity on the signs. Hopefully, you're going to be changing a lot of the signs soon. But even as they are, in this example on the right, Fit Framingham's done a decent job of explaining all the times of their fairly complex regulations, though the image on the right is a suggested schedule. I'm not looking for anything as complicated for your parking regulations. But clarity, language, and all are very important for people to understand what's going on. We have a couple of examples here on the left of maybe how your signs might be able to look that are still M U T C color and font size compliant, but maybe a little more informative because your signs, as shown on the right, is, are shown, and many, many stakeholders and folks said this, are confusing. Two hours, when? How late? What happens after two P M. in the Chestnut Lot? How many days a week is this? And then you have an overnight parking regulation that I haven't even seen a sign on. So like, there's some basic clarity can really help make this all a lot more customer-friendly for people. I'm not saying these are the only recommendations in the world that you should follow, but we think they're definitely ones to move on. They're highlighted. Green is things you can actually work on right away, but there's a red box around there that says you gotta check it. You gotta come back and you gotta say, oh, yeah, we gotta change your permit program. We gotta increase the price, we gotta lower the price. Those are important things to do. And there's other long-term recommendations in there. I'm happy to come back to any single one of them and explain any of that data. We thank you for your time. Would love to hear what your thoughts are on this.
That is a lot. And if we could do it yesterday, I would be all in. So I have three questions here. I'll start with one of them. I'm just curious. Police and fire parking was showing in the category of that lot of thirty to sixty percent full at the peak. Or ever, I guess, is what it shows. So that's really, again, a function of our zoning requirements for that lot that has created that capacity, or is it some, some other reason why we've created it to?
I don't know what would have created the supply for the police and fire, but I'm sure, you know, that's a different kind of a use. It's kind of use where there's probably gonna need to be some surge in and out. So I can understand why that might be a slightly larger lot than others. The last thing we want is to not have emergency responders. And we've seen many examples of whether it's the actual enforcement personnel, a public safety personnel parking on street with their own vehicles, or even with public emergency vehicles on street spilling over when that shouldn't happen. So I wouldn't, if it's in reference to that lot in particular, I think that's probably the one exception that isn't bad on being a little bit big.
So that's the one that you would like to go. Okay. And, and so we're all presuming that generally speaking, it's hopefully closer to sixty percent full than thirty percent full.
Could I add to that? The, the public parking lot for the police and fire station on school was identified as being available at night for the public, and it's not signed that way. And, you know, so that is something that you could make friendly and welcome. That was part of the permitting.
Part of it that could be considered. Okay. All right. I'll save my other two questions for a moment and let colleagues who would like to start.
Thank you very much. That was very in-depth. A lot was great. A lot is, is great. My own question, you talked about the two-hour limit. I understand what you're saying, but then I'm also thinking it went in place because MBTA commuters would park on-street and then go into Boston. How do we get around that?
It's because our parking is cheaper than theirs.
Yeah, it's really a pricing thing. That's all it is. If you're parking your streets cheaper than their lots, you are going to get MBTA commuters trying to do whatever they possibly can to park on streets. That is a market problem.
Okay.
If you start charging a dollar an hour, you've immediately wiped out that incentive.
So the MBTA lots are, they're like six bucks a day, I think?
Four.
Is it four?
No, they're.
I think they went up to six recently, if I'm remembering. I have this data somewhere. But yeah, that, and that's very easy to overcome by even just a dollar an hour.
Okay. And the other question is, is there COVID skew on any of your numbers?
So what's nice is all of this was done in this fall, right? And what we've found, this is actually kind of interesting, is that the, the numbers that we saw are like the exact same numbers we saw ten years ago in Needham when you had a smaller study done. They're the exact same kinds of occupancy rates we're seeing all over the place. So people are back in parking. Now, the biggest thing that they're not necessarily doing the same is maybe coming individually as frequently, or maybe staying for quite the full length of time that they once stayed before, which is unfortunate. But the parking utilization rates that we're seeing in any study we do are, are pretty much back to where they were.
Okay. Thank you.
Good question. I forgot to ask this when I saw this before. Are you recommending some kind of metered or paid parking in the two hours? So that like in the chapel street lot or Chestnut Street lot? So there wouldn't be two-hour parking. There would be some sort of pay.
Yeah, and they, the, the time regulation would go away.
Okay.
So you'd still have maybe some spaces for permits as you do, but the other spaces, you would get rid of the time limits and just let that be pay as you go. And those, those should, because they're off-street lots, they should be cheaper than prime on-street spaces.
Do you find that pay and display is more tolerable in lots than on-street or?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, most people are really loving the pay-by app. So it's just the most convenient thing. The payment's on you. You don't have to go to a meter or find a kiosk. But typically in a lot, you want to be able to visit the kiosk on the way out for somebody who's interested in doing that. So that's a typical way of doing it. It's worth noting, though, these lots that today are free and we're suggesting should be priced certainly have the utilization to warrant that, but only to a point. Like, we still want, for instance, people to be incentivized to go to those lots in the evening. So we're not saying that you should be pricing them until eight P M. as well. You may want to stop them at six or even five, depending. And that's something that may have to, you may have to play with that a little bit, but the data sort of is suggestive of that right now.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. I thought it was a very engaged. I felt like I was watching a YouTube video and like the way you went through. No, I'm serious. It's very engaging. I sat on the C E A for many years and we always talked about signage, but it was like a trial and error. Maybe we'll change that sign. No one said. And it's nice to get such a comprehensive study out of this and not only, not one that has wholesale changes that you have to do in a five-year plan. And some of this I know is a long-term, but some short-term things that you said, you know, you can do overnight, but some things that we really can do, breaking down barriers with some of those shared lots, having those discussions, the meters, just other things that I don't, I really never thought of. We had a debate for a long time in the sport about a parking garage. So it's kind of funny out of the gate that you're like, you know what? That's, that's kind of a non-starter. We used to think about places to put the parking garage and what it would look like. And so I think this is great information. Restaurants, we were concerned about losing spaces to them. And according to your data, it looks like that's, we had those spaces to give. The big thing you talked about, the permit program, talked to a lot of businesses about it. It's kind of a thorn, it's a thorn in their side too. So I like your idea of me, you know, the short-term or the monthly renewal. And on the other side of that, it's that opportunity cost that, yes, maybe the, you know, we get them off, even if it's less or whatever we do, we get them off the street. And then we get revenue on the backend where they used to be. So I think that's, that's a great, great idea. I'd like to look at eliminating some spaces that we consider dangerous. I know the one here on Chapel, right next to the crosswalk. There are spaces like that. Maybe that's the only one. There are a couple more that we've been hesitant to eliminate because we thought that every space was gold and therefore you couldn't. So kind of we shoehorn spaces in and maybe now you look and say, we didn't need to do that. Just a couple other things, shared parking, we talked about on-street. Everyone loves on-street, but then you're going to hear from the neighbors and say, why in front of my house? Why this street? So that's more of a go-slow approach, even though it makes sense. And same with on one side of the street, that business then says, why did you go over there? I'd rather have it in front of my space. So love the idea of the sidewalks to get to spaces that we didn't really think of. And then lastly, zoning, huge. We have, I've looked at it, the planning boards looked at it. And then lastly, zoning, huge. We have, I've looked at it, the planning boards looked at it. We've looked at it. It's too much for, for the use. So if we could get those changes and those suggestions, um, I think that could make a major impact on new developments as we move ahead. So great information. And I think my biggest takeaway in looking at the packet was that these things aren't long shots or dreams to get done. And we can actually get things done, um, changing fees and, and, you know, changing the whole layout. So thank you.
Well, I think that support is really important for staff too, because you know, they've been dealing with the tools that they have. And I think when you're all kind of behind and it's not a massive change, but it is incremental, it does make it easier to execute.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you for all this work. Um, I think that we've been waiting for this data for a long time as to use as a foundation for some decisions that we need to make about zoning, obviously. So speaking of, um, I know you've, you've got your beautiful graphs. Do we also have the, the raw data available to us?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. GIS, Excel, spreadsheets, all that kind of stuff. Yeah, they're all yours.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. I, I think it's terrific. Long overdue, and I'm looking forward to making some changes.
Do you want to say anything?
That was a lot of information. And I think, uh, one thing that Matt said about kind of the, um, the parking space right next to the crosswalk. When I think about maybe putting a bike rack or something right there, like, I feel like that would be something I'd be interested in, you know? Having that right next to a crosswalk, having people come in town, the center of town, and just staying in that area would be something that'd be really fascinating. Yeah. But just appreciate all of the thought, uh, that went into this and looking forward to using this data.
Great.
So I'm hoping that information about the parking standards is something that our planning board would get. And it sounds like it might be worth a separate, you know, discussion with them some evening about what that looks like. We, we've identified that as a, an issue, I think, for several years. And I, it may even be in their goals document this year as something they wanted to work on. And they haven't gotten anywhere close to that. But, but it's definitely an issue for every single project that we have and was a real sticking point on, um, the most recent development that was permitted. I probably am very interested in seeing us do work, prioritize work to solve some of the employee permit problems as, as our top priority. It, it makes me, um, really dismayed to know that we're chasing employees and that that's our fine, our, our largest thing to do. I do have a friend who at one point, um, is a hairdresser and was the, the top scofflaw in Newton for having tickets. But it just shows the unfortunate power that municipalities, the municipalities have to have perverse incentives. And these are exactly people who we need, and we need them to be able, um, to be here to have a lively downtown and got to solve that. So I'm delighted to see that there's all these other options. I hope that we are able to unlock them in a way that they can be used for the town. The question that I have is, uh, you went very quickly past, uh, smart meters versus kiosks versus apps. How can we learn more about that? Or what do we really need to do? Because I see that as a critical item. I know when I joined the board seven years ago, it was literally one of the very first things I asked when I went to my first MMA conference. And my colleague said, you've got to be kidding. Nobody in Needham wants to use an app to park or a meter like that. And I was like, I do. So, so here I sit, you know, 10 years later going, oh, thank God we might get there. So how, how can we learn more about that?
So first of all, there will be a report behind this, which will have a little bit more implementation details, of course, for staff. Generally speaking, you probably do need to have a pricing change in order to afford some of these technologies. 50 cents an hour is really maybe just going to be able to pay for the equipment and that's it. And you're not going to be able to necessarily invest in anything else. A core zone that is, like I say, higher at a dollar will help that. Certainly pricing in your lots, because they're busy enough, will also help. And those things combined can easily afford those technologies. The simplest of which is that cell phone payment overlay, which is an agreement with a vendor and literally just a bunch of stickers on your current meters. And it can just start like that. And if you start to then find out in a short amount of time that everybody really does start using these, because it's true. The survey said, I don't know, it wasn't much more than 30, 40% of people were willing to go that way. It's, it's true. At least the thousand or so responded to our survey. But I think there's many, many others who, like you, are ready and willing, because it, it has been like 80% of revenues in most cities. That's how many people jump onto that. But then you can go to the next step. Once you know that folks like doing that, that may be enough to get you to realize you don't need individual space meters if you don't want them. Though there is the convenience, because they're right there and they can take credit cards and coins for those who don't want to do this. There's also a number, so you can easily do this too. And you may then decide to do kiosks. Kiosks are technically a more expensive option, but they're both relatively close. The individual units are more expensive. But, you know, there's some trade-offs when you're dealing with one unit handling a number of spaces, depending on how you manage a system. You can have a whole parking lot with just two kiosks. We encourage anything that's going to be customer responsive, and this is the most. More kiosks is nicer. Smart meters everywhere is super customer responsive, but a little bit of clutter. But you've got meters already. So that's an option. So I think all those have pros and cons. And we're actually working out a quick cost pro forma as a demonstration for the town to then use and play with as they choose and see fit, depending on those technologies. So you'll be able to hash that out yourselves.
So I'm looking at Karis Lustig in the back there and thinking, you know, one of the things I think about pulling out those meters is we make it then easier to plow those sidewalks. Cause we start to clear them out and simplify our lives on another dimension.
Never.
We could use, you know, the ambassadors you talked about to help people learn if they don't know how to set up the app. Once your app is set up, it's really easy to go forward to pay for that. So the, the one thing that I think of is we, we currently have somebody in town who inherited, uh, from her father, when her father passed away, a large bag of quarters. And she has been using those quarters to gift parking spaces to people every time she parks. So maybe our app needs a gifting option. They manage to gift the next person who arrives their place and pay it forward. It is really a lovely gesture. And I know there are people who are grateful to find a space and have it already.
They have validation programs on the apps. Yes.
So.
Madam Chair? One more question while I have you here. That's been a subject of debate. Holiday parking being free. We've heard back and forth that some businesses love it, of course, brings people to downtown. Others say people just park and don't really shop and use it for free parking. What do you, is there an answer to that burning question?
Everybody loves free parking, right? So I mean, that's ultimately one of the problems of a parking system is that free or underpriced parking, people just take advantage of. And that's what's happening here. So honestly, when your parking pricing goes away over the holiday, it's not probably that much worse than it was because it wasn't a system that was really encouraging good behavior to begin with. So, and yeah, I understand politically, even in systems that do have more market-based pricing, sometimes they will still do that. It's a political thing. I think that's ultimately a political decision to make.
Right. Well said.
Nicely done. Excellent. Excellent. All right. Is there anything else we should know tonight? It seems like it's been quite comprehensive and I really appreciate the brain dump that you.
Sorry for that. There was a lot there.
I'm sorry it was so late at night for you to be here, but.
This is what we do in New England.
Terrific. We're all set. Thank you so much. You know what? I hope you will help keep us accountable and we look forward to being able to report progress the next time we see you.
I welcome that. I would love to do that. I was here 10 years ago helping out on that small study.
It's got to be sooner than that, but you need to check in on us. I'm just giving you permission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ann.
All right. Dave and Karis, and I don't know if Tom is here or on the line. The next item that we have is the stormwater fee. Stormwater is, um, result of the regulations that are, are set forth, as it says here by NIPD's. And thank you for spelling out that acronym again, National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. Right? We are going to be subject to, um, needing to spend more money on our stormwater. And a stormwater fee is a way to help offset those additional costs that the town is going to have to incur to comply. And so we've got a proposal for how that could work.
Yes, Madam Chair. The, um, it was a little over three years ago to the date that, uh, there was going to be a public hearing on this very issue. And, uh, we had a little thing called COVID that came and shut us down for a while. But what was true then is even more true today. And that is that the communities have a responsibility to manage and control stormwater. Stormwater is, as would imply, water that results from storms. But it's also water that results as an after effect. Snowstorms and you have melting. And, um, and unfortunately, uh, it also involves when there's a water main break, not a stormwater, but it's water that's running. And what communities are responsible for is to control where that water goes to try to ensure that it's, uh, clean. And it's not, uh, impacting our public waterways, our streams, our ponds, our lakes and such. And that's a federal requirement. Needham, um, has, as every community has to file a permit in a plan in order to address, uh, its steps in terms of reducing pollutants and controlling stormwater runoff. The cost that over 30 years is in the millions of dollars. Over the next five years, based upon the capital request and the preliminary numbers, we're looking at about a $900,000 a year expense just in the next five years. And that's, uh, a little on, on the conservative side. Recognizing this several years ago, uh, and prior to getting to the point to have a, a hearing where the template, a, um, a, a fee to, uh, pay for the cost of stormwater, there was a committee put together that involved, uh, citizens, uh, representation from the Watersure Rate Structure Committee, Finance Committee and citizens at large. And, uh, through that and through a series of meetings, all the material was provided to you and was in the packets also available online, as well as the minutes from those meetings and some supporting, uh, documentation. The approach, uh, looked at was that the maintenance and operation of our stormwater mitigation effort should continue to be, as it's been paid now, within the tax levy, within the general fund. But in recognition that the extraordinary cost that is coming and required on the capital side, that the, that another revenue stream is necessary. And with that, that was the recommendation, the stormwater fee for the purpose of having funds to help defray some of those costs that would otherwise be put on to the tax bill. Now, this board has the power to implement the stormwater fee at any time and it can do so. And, uh, many communities have. There's another part to this for the success of doing what we want it to do. And that is what's on the annual town meeting warrant, uh, and that is to create a special stabilization fund that is recommended the town meeting approve, uh, which is allowed by state law that these fees that are collected will go directly into that fund and are specifically reserved for appropriation for stormwater related investments. And, uh, that is the two-pronged approach. One is identifying the revenue source. Secondly, is ensuring that those money is going to be reserved for that intended purpose. And, and that's, uh, the approach, uh, that we are recommending to the board. The board, uh, is scheduled to have a public hearing in two weeks, uh, to get to community, uh, feedback. And there'll be, uh, some additional information provided to the board at that time. We provided some of the advanced information, such as the PowerPoint presentation, which is not going to be shown tonight, but will be available for the, um, board in the public to view, uh, in, in two weeks. The other thing is looking at, uh, the fee structure in the amount. The fee structure is based upon the amount of impervious, uh, the, the square footage of impervious area on a parcel to make a determination of what the fee would be. Now, there are many, many approaches. You can do a flat fee, uh, per square foot. You can do ranges, uh, you can do, uh, assumptions. The prior, um, team, uh, put together a, a plan that had ranges for what we called tiers, nine different tiers. And if, uh, your property fell in, in that tier in terms of impervious coverage, uh, that would be the annual fee that would be paid. The proposal is that fee would be charged through the utility bill. So for residential property, they would have that annual fee, uh, paid in four installments. For commercial accounts, they would have that fee paid in 12, uh, installments because they pay, uh, monthly. The, um, the fee structure is designed to basically captures most of the homes in Needham are going to fall in the first tier. In the first tier, uh, is, um, is significantly less than other, uh, properties. And it's proposed and it's the same rate as what, what was being proposed before, $38.20 a year. Uh, and just, uh, to, to put that in perspective, uh, many of the communities are catching up and actually ahead of Needham. And stormwater, uh, fees are a way of life throughout the United States of America, not just the Massachusetts, but in Massachusetts and nearby communities, the town of, of, of the city of Newton, $100 flat fee, uh, per residential property that is paid. The town of Westford, $75, uh, a year for a flat fee. Chalmers Ridge, $62. Pepperell, $60. Tewksbury, $75. I'm giving you a spattering of towns. So you got small towns, you got rural towns, you have, um, uh, you know, communities with lots of open space. You have congested areas. They're all having to deal with stormwater runoff. They're all having to invest, uh, in ways to control stormwater. That's capital investment and they're all having to implement these, uh, fees. So, uh, with that, that's why we're, uh, we have a fee. We do not believe it's, uh, it is high in comparison to communities all around. The fund is not designed to pay for 100% of the capital cost. It could not. This fee, if implemented, the fee structure that's presented to you will generate about $600,000 a year in revenue. And, uh, and as I stated earlier, the average cost over that five years is going to be about $900,000. So this fee is not going to cover all the costs, but it's certainly going to help, uh, to defray, uh, the cost. The last piece is, what's inevitably is, well, what if the fee gets adjusted? How would that be? Well, the recommendation, and I would say that the recommendation is as valid today as it was three years ago, is the select board already established a committee many years ago, uh, that's worked very well and, and annually reviewing this, uh, the water use fees and the sewer use fees makes the reports and recommendations to you. It would be by extension that they would also look at and make recommendations if there needs to be any adjustment to the stormwater fee for future use. Ms. Lustig, uh, can certainly, uh, address questions, uh, in terms of the operation, how it impacts DPW and of course any financial questions. I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you for that. Who would like to go first? Marcus?
Yes. Thank you for that, Dave. A question about the flat fee. Is that just, so you said in comparison, some people were a hundred dollars, $65. Was that just for that first tier, those flat fees that you were talking about?
Yes, I was comparing apples to apples.
Okay, just making sure.
That's, uh, generally what these most single-family homes would be subject to in all those communities. And the 3820 would, would be most of the single-family homes in Needham would be subject to.
Okay. So that up to like 4,000 and then for that 4,000 to 8,000 square feet, it'd be a different flat fee.
That would be $80. And at that point, you're accounting for 99.5% of the single-family homes in town Needham.
But still much better comparison to a lot of the other towns and people. Got it.
And given that the max fee is, I'm, I'm not on that page anymore, was what $1,500 or something? So I, I guess if it had been a higher number, I might be concerned about knowing who our top 10 impervious surfaces are to understand if it were a larger impact. But it seems to me that this is something that could be accommodated, certainly within the scheme of the business that they're going to be doing.
Certainly. And, um, specifically, there's only one property that actually falls into that. That's basically, uh, that area size is basically 16 acres. And the property that would be impacted is Coca-Cola.
Okay. Where it's all paved. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Who determines the square footage of the impervious surfaces?
The, it's based upon our GIS system. And generally, it's assumed that most single-family homes would be only in Tier One. Certainly, if there was someone who claimed that we have it wrong. And I anticipate that in the initial years, that it'll probably be those claims. We can certainly look at the data on GIS again. And secondly, if it's needed to actually take a visit if there's site. But for 4,000 square feet of impervious, that's what, and again, definition, what's impervious? Driveways, roofs, patios.
Right, sidewalks?
Sidewalks, but that's not on people's property, right? That's public property.
Okay, all right. Madam Chair, thank you for this work. And with the long time coming, I just, my concern is on commercial properties. They're mandated to have a certain amount of pavement, unlike a house who kind of optional, if you want to extend the driveway or, you know, put addition on. I just want to make sure that, just to think about, that you're going to get into the larger numbers of the commercial space. But there, they really are boxed in because of their requirements and their four. And I know it's not big money, but just kind of a thought to commercial area. Otherwise, I think this fee structure is great. Are we looking, when we, when we look at the structure, that it's going to be year to year? Are we trying to do like a three-year look ahead and say, okay, so for predictability, this is what we're thinking, or is it going to change like we do with other things, you know, a year, two years?
If I understand the question, you're wondering about the fee structure.
That's right. Year to year?
I think we would look at it year to year. The census is the initial setting would be for the first three years.
Three, okay.
That was the original thinking three years ago. Of course, the thing is, the rates that we have is 3820 was the rate that would have been in fact in 2020. And technically, in 2023, we might be amending it. But we still feel that that's appropriate. And if implemented, if adopted and implemented, I would say it's at least a couple of years before there would be a change.
Okay, great, thank you.
Heidi?
I have no questions. This all seems very reasonable and well explained. So thank you for the work.
I just noted that Tony's handwritten note was on there. Just a reminder that Tony devoted a great part of his life to Niptys. We thank him for this.
Thank you, absolutely.
So while you're here, we have a question that has been raised to this board by Mr. Mo Handel, who sits on the MWRA Advisory Board on behalf of the town. And the Advisory Board has apparently been addressing communities' concerns related to the new Niptys permit that people are having to go through the process of doing right now. He, after having some discussions at the Advisory Board, there was a request asking this board if we would consider weighing in and sending a letter. And we don't have such a letter drafted, so I'm actually proposing that we might authorize the town manager to send a letter on our behalf. Asking that the MWA Advisory Board be permitted to be invited to attend the Virtual Information Center as representatives of the communities. Otherwise, they would not typically have been an invitee, but they actually have information and expertise that they can make up communities aware of by participating in that session if they were to be permitted. So there was some question about whether they could be permitted and some question about what their role was going to be in this. So the request was that the board consider asking that they be able to permit and assist communities in that new permit process. I don't know, Karis, if you have anything that you want to add or if you've been involved in this at all. It was something that did come from Mo to me and to Kate.
I haven't been involved largely in any broader discussion, other than the EPA did reach out to indicate that they would be inviting or they would be recognizing that we would be named as part of the Niptys Permit for Deer Island and then the invitation to the follow-up. So that's really the only communication that I've had on that particular issue.
Okay, so, and you're correct. It is, here I was reading quickly, trying to find out what I, the words that I needed. But it is specific to the Deer Island Treatment Plant that we are all a party to. And, you know, just trying to be sure that we have the best information in the room when that discussion takes place.
Makes sense.
Kate, do you want to vote? Or is a sense of the committee enough? What would you like?
I think it makes perfect sense.
I think we would appreciate you're doing that, yeah. Katie, got it, thank you. Any other questions for Dave and Karis? Otherwise, I think we're good. We will be bringing this back in two weeks. It has been long coming and at least I've been expecting that it was coming because we know this is a very significant cost for the town that is being incrementally added. It is something that all of us will benefit from, being able to see this treatment exist instead of going into our waterways. So a good thing.
And Karis, good luck with, you went the crew powering straight.
Yes, we were going to invite people for ride-alongs tonight, but I don't think that will be necessary. So that's positive or negative, I'm not sure.
I know, I speak for the board.
The amount of snow is not as great as you thought it was going to be. Did we get to three?
An inch, an inch maybe.
So disappointing.
You know what? My snow blower has not even come out of the garage this winter. So at this point, I keep saying, they don't need to make it come out of the garage. It can wait till next year.
Well, the highway superintendent's away, so if he comes back, we should be all set, right?
Yes, yeah.
At least knows when he's back.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda. Open the May 8th, 2023 Special Town Meeting Warrant.
That's right. So a few items here. The, we will ask the board to vote to make some changes to the annual town meeting warrant. And some of the reason is that we've included them in the special. So in order to have enough time to complete our collective bargaining with the fire union, we've asked them to move the article from the annual to the special, along with the potential home rule petition to exempt the fire department from civil service, as we did last year at this same special town meeting for police. We have articles that are placeholders to amend the operating budget, the sewer enterprise and the water enterprise fund budget. And we have included in the special the Capital Improvement Fund, the Capital Facility Fund, the Athletic Facility Improvement Fund, and the Debt Service Stabilization Fund. There's been conversations ongoing with the Finance Committee about whether there should be additional transfers into some of these funds, and it just would give more time because the, not all of these funds are on the annual. And we proposed to take the Debt Service Stabilization Fund, which was on the annual, onto the special. The only one that remains in the annual then is the Athletic Facility Stabilization, the base amount that we do every year that the Finance Committee already recommended adoption of. So the final piece is.
Could I just, will we expect to have a discussion with FinCom about how they're thinking about these stabilization funds at some point?
Okay, absolutely. There are two articles in the, well, I skipped one, okay. The other items that we're proposing to move from the annual to the special is our proposal with respect to amending the charter for the Personnel Board. And so Chair and I had a productive meeting with the town moderator. Is that just last week?
It was just last week, yes.
So we, based on his input, we have a new recommendation for you. So we will have that for you by your next meeting. Another item that's not in here yet, that will likely be here at your next meeting when we ask you to close the warrant, is that in the annual town meeting, we've proposed a warrant article for appropriation for funds we've received from the opioid, a class action lawsuit. In conversations with the Finance Committee, there's been a suggestion that instead of having a series of warrant articles, potentially over the next 30 years, that we consider creating a special purpose stabilization fund that would accept these class action monies. It can only be spent for very specific purposes. We could, you know, start to have them grow together, and we would bring specific proposals to town meeting to be spending those. So Dave Davison is working on language for that. And then we would propose to remove the warrant article, even though we did the unthinkable and did the numbering already for the annual. It's never, it's never filed till it's final. And the last two are technical articles that we will have presentations for you on at a future meeting, given the hour. But there was a change in state law with respect to, or interpretation, with respect to how peg access funds are, need to be paid to the municipality and then provided to the access stations, instead of having the funds paid by the cable providers directly to the access stations, which has been happening. So we would need to create this fund and then put the funding into it for the, for the current year. Is that, did I miss anything critical on that, Dave? Okay. I would expect Dave and Miles to make a presentation for you at a future meeting. This is something that most recently came up during our cable licensing that we went through, that Cable Council said this is the time that we really should be doing this. So with that, Madam Chair, it's a lot. Would ask the board to vote to open the warrant.
I welcome the motion.
Chair, I make a motion to the board, vote to open the warrant for the May 8th, 2023 Special Town Meeting. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Five zero, thank you.
So with respect to the annual, the following changes have or are proposed to be made. The first is that we, as we said, move the fire union bargaining to the special. The second is we have been able to identify grant funding for our Human Resources Fellowship program. And since we had not intended that that would ever be, at least in the form that we were proposing it in the operating budget, it, it makes, you know, as opposed to one-time funding in the annual or one-time grant funding, it makes sense to us. So that's a very exciting opportunity for us. So we'd ask that that article be removed.
That's Article Eight.
I believe it's been removed. Yes, so Article Eight, now it's, that's already been removed from the draft. Article Eight is the outside recruitment that we propose to use consultant to help us with our hard-to-fill jobs. We are proposing to remove the opioid recovery and mitigation fund, Article, Article 11, and to handle that through the special purpose stabilization fund in the special. As I noted, the Personnel Board article has been removed and included in the special. The article to fund, the CPC article to fund improvements to Claxton Field, was voted to be withdrawn both by the Park and Recreation Commission and the CPC. And our hope is that we will be able to move that to October, once we have the project back on track. Again, we remove the Debt Service Stabilization Fund and move that to the special. And finally, have had correspondence with the Citizens Petitioners and our, we're all working together to create a new article. Like they agreed to remove it, that's why it's not here. And we're working with them on a substitute article information that will be outside of the Citizens Petition, as is the normal course. And they've been very receptive and helpful. And I have a draft from Town Council, and I'll be sharing it with you and with them. Great, happy to answer any questions about changes. It is still possible that there may be something else. On May 28th would be the last possible date for us to make a final change. May, March?
March. I was, I was thinking, I think that's.
Been way out ahead.
Yeah, it's like May.
We'll be going to print like March 29th, so I don't expect any changes, but something else gets withdrawn somehow.
But something could happen. Kate, not quite in the four corners, but related. Claxton, can you just update the board on the initial findings about Claxton Field? Is that possible?
We don't, can you start with that?
I know it was discussed last night at Parks and Rec.
We don't have any complete picture.
And so Westminster Sampson was able to go out and do the borings right after the big board meeting that we had. We don't have an at-fall analysis yet, so it is too, it's premature to say what the findings are. So we had committed to meeting with the high school JV and varsity softball teams to find relocation alternatives that they would prefer. We have done that, so they will start at Claxton. And if need be, go to Memorial Park and Broad Meadow. And then we have a meeting next week with other user groups to finalize those plans as well. And again, they're just contingency plans if they're needed.
So my understanding was that, that whatever they've heard initially gave them enough confidence to even go to start the season there, with the understanding that should a complete report come back with something different, they need to be prepared to pivot. But initially, they were just going somewhere else. So that is a change, no?
No, I can clarify it. It's, I'm glad you raised it. So the field was only closed because it was the winter. We never had any information to indicate that we would close. And so the plan all along was to keep the fields open unless we got new information that would indicate otherwise. We have not yet, but we have very incomplete information.
Okay, all right, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie, being on top of that.
Madam Chair, just for the motion, because I, we can say to amend the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant as printed, but we're also going to remove just, what's here, Article 11?
We are, from the vote that you already took?
Yes.
We removed fire, we removed the fellowship, we will remove the opioid. We removed the Personnel Board, we removed Claxton, and we removed the Debt Service Stabilization Fund. So the only change to this printed warrant?
Yes.
Is the opioid?
Is 11.
But it's changed all those things from your last vote.
Right, okay. So if I move that the board vote to amend the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, that would suffice?
Including, yeah. Can you say, as presented at the meeting, including Article 11?
Removal of Article.
Removal of Article 11 or something?
Thank you.
Or vote to amend the 2023 Annual Town Meeting Warrant as presented at our meeting with the removal of Article 11 in the printed warrant in our packet.
Is there a second? Any further discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is an update on our dangerous dog. I did not go back and look at when the last meeting was that we, where we took the vote on the dangerous dog, actually. And I probably should have checked that. But those who have been following this case will recall that the board voted that the dog should be euthanized. It was September 27th, that the dog should be euthanized. That ruling was challenged in court by the owner of the dog. And in fact, the court has come back and indicated that the dog is not required to be euthanized. So the dog is still alive and living in the same location. And the dog is required to continue to comply with all of the stipulations that the Select Board made. And the Select Board has verified that actions such as neutering the dog have taken place as we requested last fall. So I think with that update, people are advised that the dog is still living there, and they should be aware of that. The next item on our agenda is a board discussion of the Select Board Code of Conduct. We reviewed a draft proposal at our last meeting, February 28th. And the subcommittee has brought it to, brought it to us again. I do not believe that there have been any changes.
Was the minor change that Mr. Keen mentioned under Section 8.1 that had been proposed by a resident?
Right, and we added what cognizant to.
Yes, so is it the sentence that?
Eight point one, right.
The notion that members are encouraged to take advantage of the phone advice and to periodically review the summaries to be cognizant of any potential issues. So that was the, okay.
For the questions?
No, I moved that the board vote to adopt the Select Board Code of Conduct dated March 14th, 2023.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero.
That's another goal done, though.
That is another goal down. Excellent, thank you. Yeah, thank you, Heidi and Kevin, for their work in bringing this forward and developing it. And to Kate. And and to Kate and the team for pulling together, Kate and Katie and Miles for pulling together kind of some of the best examples for the team to have to look at and discuss and bring this proposal to us. So much appreciated. Okay, believe it or not, it's shortly before ten o'clock, I'm feeling like it's old times, even though we started an hour and a half earlier. And that brings us to a board discussion for any committee reports. I know we have had a couple of committees who have met, so I don't know who would like to speak first.
Sure.
Kevin, the Climate Action Planning Committee.
Tap C. I have a lot to go over. We, so I know it's late. We are really a great meeting, two upshots, greenhouse gas study will start soon. Kim Lundgren Associates is a consultant. And a lot of thanks to Town Meeting for voting for the funds for this, the fall timing. Also, the muni aggregation consultant, the proposals have gone out, those should be, hopefully one day we'll have help with electric bills. And then the committee did look into zoning and we had Dave Roach and Dustin Sabiano. And they're great to talk to and is almost like a pearly game. You could cite chapter and verse or number to Dave Roach, you could see his eyes go and you could almost just talk it. But definitely it's coming up with solar arrays and solar canopies, it's going to be a whole issue of zoning for the planning board to work on. Curiously, you brought up the idea that we'll have to capture stormwater of solar arrays. And then the other one is, we talked about this opt-in specialized code. And that's going to be a tough nut to crack, but it'll be very interesting to see going on, so we'll get more information on that. So and we're all going to learn the acronym HERS, Home Energy Rating System, for the all of you out there.
Reading system, got it, never forget.
We're getting the business, because you have a lot of work.
The HERS raiders will be everywhere, for sure.
I know, fascinating stuff, so that's it.
It was interesting to hear the building commissioner say that the difference between the new stretch code and the super duper opt-in stretch code, right? He believes from a cost perspective, if you're planning from the start, really is not a significant difference. That's at least the belief that he had stated at the meeting and it was interesting to hear that. As we're, we are automatically opt into just the stretch code. So we we considered that we really wanted to understand what the new one looked like, but that was his initial perspective on it. With respect to the solar issues, he was saying that he thinks we need a completely separate section of our zoning to deal with that, that it's sufficiently different from other things that we have on the ground or from other things that we currently have on the roofs. It's not like you can just add it into some existing regulations, the regulations will need to be completely separate. We do have some bit of information that was developed related to the Sunuda, Sunita Williams School, where we did put a solar on a roof that might be able to be able to lift it and adapt it for for other entities. And this question of parking, you know, really, I agree with you, the idea that stormwater gets built into it and that we can create a win-win by putting in solar with some stormwater work at the same time is, I think, a bonus. So, active park.
Ready, go for it.
Recreation.
Last night and spent a long time talking about off-leash dog activity. Ultimately, the group voted that this was, in fact, an unmet need of the group of type of recreation that was needed in the town. And so set ourselves the homework of looking at various locations that we could recommend for such activities. We also are going to be putting together a very, very short survey for people interested in this activity to take, to help us understand better what they're looking for. So we'll be publicizing that when it's available and coming to our next meeting, hopefully armed with some ideas and some data.
Terrific, look forward to it. Any other committees? Are we all good?
Good. Motion to adjourn, Madam Chair.
What's the rush?
Don't bother to second.
Second.
Second, any further discussion?
Last chance, Matt.
No, we're good.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? We are adjourned.